Every week. Steven Stacey's laughing because she knows. He's switched them and changed them around.
There's another one over there.
This one I had last night.
He's tried them all.
That'd be the sun in your eyes there.
You like to disappear from the waist down.
Good morning. I will call the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order on this date, December 11th, 2018. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is established, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have one request revolving on some committee met yesterday. I'd like to request to look at one more request. And I'm on at number seven, I believe. You can make the seven C.
Seven C, okay. Anything else? Okay, then motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time in our meeting, we have the opportunity for public comment. And our procedure is always the same. We'll give you five minutes. We ask that if you have something written, you can certainly give that to us after you speak. You may come up to the table with the microphone. There's a sheet of paper there. You sign in with your name and your address, and then give us your name, and then we will time you from that point on. So whoever would want to be first can step up to the table.
My name is Joyce Haskry. I didn't make it to the truth in taxation last week, so I'm here today. I live at 1102 West First Street in Grand Ray. This is the third year that I have come before you, hoping you would listen to me and others with our concerns, questions, and suggestions regarding high levy increases. In the past, you have pretended to listen, but you had already decided what you were going to do, and it's just a formality to you. When will there be some dialogue? Have you forgotten you were elected by the taxpayers because it seems you vote more out of self-interest over representation of the people? 12%, 17 and 1/2, and now 6%. 35% in levies in the last three years. There should be a zero levy this year. With these kind of increases, there should have been a hiring and wage freeze. Again, I'm asking you this year, did you give any directives to cut costs? The answer is obviously a no. Instead, we now realize there was no transparency in your spending and no transparency in your wage negotiations for 2018. Three of our own commissioners didn't know what the true cost of your negotiations were and what it would cost this county this year and for years to come. Your administrator and two commissioners did know, however. This money you overspent is the hard-earned money of the taxpayer, and they have entrusted you to act in a fiscally responsible manner. I believe there was a study done on Cook County wages approximately one and a half years ago, and results indicated Cook County was up in the 90% bracket in wages, and this did not include benefits. I think the public should know just what you gave away in 2018. To raises and longevity bonuses, you now have nine out of 11 department heads that make over $100,000 each, including 1,800 to 2,400 in VIBA contributions and a good health package. These wage percentages varied anywhere from 9% to 30%, and that's not including the new department head at 53%, which cost the county $180,000 from 2017 to 18. 2018 negotiations also included generous wage and longevity bonuses for the rest of the Cook County employees. I understand everyone needs a working wage, but to give hourly wage increases of close to $5 more per hour is out of line. Longevity bonuses gave all employees an extra 5% for 10 years, 7% for 15 years, and 9% for 20. And if I'm wrong, you can correct me. You added this to their base pay and not in a check form. You could not have thought of the long-term effect when adding to base pay. Now the county is paying additional FICA, Medicare, PRA, and each year it compounds. No private business in this county can come close to those wages. It looks to me like you were buying employees loyalty and you gave away the store. And Brady, I would like to know the true cost when you run the numbers to include PTO, deferred comp, and overtime that is in the books. Could you give me that? What about the reserves, Brady? What's in the reserves right now? 7 million? No answer, okay. What is in our reserve fund? How much was put in reserves in 2018? Or better yet, what was actually not put in reserves because we needed $380,000 more dollars to pay for these negotiations? No taxpayer should have to lower their lifestyle for this out-of-line spending, overspending. What will your legacy be to the taxpayer? The jail judicial building? You have now approved a second study to cost $40,000 to see if this facility is feasible. You say this won't cost the taxpayer any additional money since the bond issue will be paid off in the near future and it can go towards this new facility. That terminated bond payment should go back to the taxpayer by means of lowering taxes. We don't need a $5 million facility. And I think you should be looking at your per diems. And I don't know what you have in the works for the Holland New Highway Maintenance Building, but we cannot afford a million-dollar facility. And you know how I feel about the why. I don't feel that the why has any skin in the game. And they should be partially responsible for what these expenses are, that the city is contributing, and that the county is contributing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Arvis Thompson, District 1.
As an example of what is not happening, I am a caretaker out at the Colville Town Hall. Back in 2014, I asked, I suggested that there were some improvements that needed to be made to that building before it falls down. That was 2014. I heard nothing. In 2015, I asked again. I heard nothing. In 2016, I asked again. I got a runaround that something was going to be done. In 2016, I asked again, and nothing has happened. I have not seen a letter, a note, heard a discussion, what's going to happen with that building? Are you going to wait for it to fall down? Do you want to bulldoze it down? Did you want to sell it? What's your intent? That small building, to me, indicates something missing in this whole process. If you're not taking care of that one tiny little building that is not going to cost you an arm and a leg, it does provide some nice social opportunities for the community of Colville. I maintain it at no income. We try to raise a little bit of money with the rent that comes in to take care of the expenses. Yes, you pay the insurance, and yes, you pay the lights. Is that an indication of what's going on with the rest of your buildings, with the rest of the assets that you own? Do you have a plan for what's coming down the road? You're talking about building a 4-plus-million-dollar law enforcement center. I see all the schematics are down for all the other buildings that are going to be a part of that whole process. The law enforcement center, as St. Louis County says, build it and they will come, not on your life. They're not going to do that. Why are we? 4 million represents a building. That does not represent salaries, does not represent upkeep, maintenance, and all the things that are going to come along. You said that this is going to be cost-effective. I'd like to see those numbers on cost-effective again. A law enforcement center, then, means that you're going to be taking some of the people out of the courthouse. Oh, yippee. That means that we're going to have spaces to remodel. You're talking about building a social services building, 9,300 feet, I believe, is what I saw in one of the plans. For who? For what? Our county is aging. You're chasing all the young people away. Are you going to have a geriatric ward someplace for us in the law enforcement center? What's your long-term plan? A law enforcement center means a social service building, means a county core health remodeling. Those numbers that I saw were like 4-plus million, 4-plus million, 2-plus million. Where do you plan to get this money? My income does not increase, except for, oh, let's see, Social Security, that goes up 1.2%. Oh, yippee. I can't begin to keep up with what the county, the hospital, and the school are doing to us. Would you ever consider zero? Tell the county now, zero increase next year. Learn to live with what you have. Plan accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Arvis. I'll just remind you that we do not respond to your questions, but we're all writing things down here. And eventually, if you have our agenda, you know that we will be discussing the budget and so forth. So if you would like to, or are able to stay here this morning, we will have much discussion about this. But we want to hear your opinion first and your concerns. So who would like to be next?
Good morning. Ben Peters. Well, we've got a lot of big challenges. You guys have a lot of big challenges, a lot of hot buttons, increased wages, new employees, county jail proposals, Health and Human Services building, all that's been mentioned today. It appears, there's the appearance that it's a one-directional conversation, and I don't know if you guys read newspapers or not, or our county paper, but there's a growing number of dissent among the taxpayers that I think are pretty justifiable. We've had incredible increases the last few years, each attributed to different categories. But this room, this very room, has become more of an idealistic or partisan warfare room and not one of problem-solving and intentional progress. I think that can change. Last night, I had the privilege with many of you to sit at the Speak Your Peace workshop, and I think it offered a different strategy on how we can maybe get more involvement and inclusion from a lot of the dissent, right? We may not all agree. We may not have the same agendas, but we certainly all have brains. And that was where I took off the meeting, is that there's some assets behind me in this room that are upset and frustrated. But if used, we can solve every one of these problems, every one of these. Nothing is too big. We certainly can't undo some of the spending, some of these things that are in question. But what can we do now? What can we put forward to involve and include and make sure that we can get in a better place? This doesn't have to be a conflict room. It can be one that offers solutions. I think very few could effectively argue that we don't need any of the services expensed by the county. That's commonality. We all agree that some of those services, and most of them, are needed. But we can argue and criticize and debate the scope and size of these services. The growth that we've seen in some of these departments is just not sustainable. The tax implication for young families is just a deterrent. I would encourage the board today to adopt the tenants of Speak Your Peace, and I think that, I think you're probably going to do that. I think it's good. I don't think anybody can argue with the nine tenants. They're all there, and they're good. It's proven that it does work in certain circumstances, and I think it can work if you guys have, if you want to take it to heart, we can work on it together. That all being said, I think that, in fairness and in transparency, we have $761,000, Brady, in federal pilt that's sitting on the books, right? And the argument is, well, we haven't gotten any guidance on this money. And that may be fine. Bob, you and I talked last night, and St. Louis County has the same issue, right? They got all this money. But this isn't the first time we received federal pilt money. Even if we're worried about earmarking a percentage for the school or something like that, $250,000, you put it in an escrow account for the school, spend $500,000, reduce it. We can get this levy to zero this year, right? And it wouldn't, it's our money. It's already sitting there. So I don't understand why we're holding on to that money. And I don't think that you can provide an explanation for that. So that's what I've got. Thank you.
I'm just going to stand up because I have some gas in my pants, and I don't want to get your chair all dirty. But my name is Colton Thompson. I am a resident of Grand Ray. I was born here, raised here. I love this town. I love this community. I'd like to thank everyone here for taking time out of the busy day to come to this meeting and hear what we all have to say. Now, I'm a future property holder, business owner in Cook County. Myself, my friends, we are the future of this community. And at the rate that the spending is going and the taxes are increasing, none of us will be able to afford to stay here. We'll be driven out. We'll be forced to leave. We'll have no other option. And, you know, it's just really sad because I love this community. I love the people in it. I've just been raised here, and it's a great thing. But with the way that the spending is going, it's not a good thing. We're at a make it or break it moment right now, and if something doesn't get done, we're going to break it, and you won't have any hope in fixing it. I'm only 20 years old. You know, I'm not 50, 60, 70. I don't have years of meetings and political science behind me, but I can tell that what's going on right now is wrong, and it needs to change. For instance, this 4.5 million-dollar law enforcement facility, the only time we would need it is on fishermen's, when our town size quadruples, you know, and there's a lot of drinking and crime going on. But I'm going to assume that no one in here has been in jail on fishermen's. I was. There's three other people. There's absolutely no need for this spending. The facility we have is more than adequate. You know, it's just fine. There were plenty of deputies. There was nothing going awry. You know, we just don't need it. And I just hope you'll take what I have to say today into consideration as a future member of this county. And I hope to get some of my friends and peoples, families, and sons and daughters here to voice their opinion, because we really do love this place and need to figure out a way to keep it. Thank you.
Pete Greshick. I'm here today just to relay a few stories that I've run across that really concern me. The first one is three years ago, no, five years ago, went on Pump to Take, and I met a lady. She retired. She built a million-dollar home on Lake Superior. She loved Cook County. She started in the mailroom and retired as vice president of a big company in Minneapolis. And I really enjoyed the conversation. I went back three years later, and she's concerned about her septic, and just a really quality person. I went back there last year, and we're doing an inspection. And I said, what's going on? She said, I see the handwriting on the wall for Cook County. I'm getting out, while the getting is good. And she said, I've dealt with the county board. There's incompetence in the county board? And she said, I'm very concerned. And, you know, when I got home, there's a woman that I really respected, and that got me concerned. On Friday, I got a call from a guy on County Road 7. He was having some trouble with his septic. Went out there and diagnosed it and talked about when it was pumped last, and he said, well, I wouldn't need to inspect it in the spring. I said, oh, are you selling? He said, yeah, I'm forced to sell. And this is a nice home. I said, well, where are you going to go? He said, I don't know, but I'm getting out of here. Now, if those are the concerns of some pretty quality people, I think you really need to take a look at what we're spending. And I know this isn't supposed to get personal, but we hired a county administrator to save us money. That has not happened. And I was laying in bed watching Channel 6 News. He should be a politician, not a county administrator. He said, we're going to build a $5 million facility, and it's not going to affect the taxpayers of Cook County. I asked my wife, I wonder if Lake County's paying for it? St. Louis County paying for it? Or is it falling from the sky? Because that statement is misleading and should not be promoted when I'm a taxpayer, a concerned taxpayer, that my house, I'm $100,000 under the assessed value, and I can't sell it. Reason I can't? It's a family home. We're not concerned about families anymore in Cook County. We're concerned about the vacationers that are coming in, the vacation rentals, and Lake Superior homes. We're pricing the family homes out of range. And the last thing is the county raises. I've got a lot of friends that got big raises, and good for them, but shame on you.
Chat Len Scoot, Grand Ray. Anyway, I've been on the county board for 20 years. I have served in many capacities and many budgets, and I know the struggles that you go through too. And I also know the feelings of the people that are behind me and of many that are out in the community. I got many phone calls from Aiken County, from the commissioner out there, looking at we sending our people to their jails. It costs a lot of money. She said, aren't you concerned? I said, yes, I am. Then I talked to my cousin, who works for Newark, and I said about to her, what's going on? Are we sending any people up there? Not many. I've talked to the sheriff. I didn't get a real good answer. But I also talked to other people that are concerned about, do we really need a new jail? Do we need more housing here? No. That's the answer I get from others. So why are we considering building a better place or a bigger place? Our population, is it because of drugs that come in from Canada or other places? I don't know. But I think you better take a good, hard look at what it's costing us to send people out where we already belong, to Newark and AJC. You have a hard job ahead of you. Look at it from a taxpayer's point of view too. Thank you.
First of all, I want to correct Joyce on one thing she had made that was about overall levy for the past three years. She's correct. It would have been 35% if we hadn't had the increase in August, that was when the budget was amended. So actually, I know it wasn't, things were in negotiations and things weren't finalized, but the bottom line is wages are part of an operating budget. And that was, that would have brought the levy up an extra 4.8%. So it would have been around 40% for the three years. And that's the actual, the way I look at it. Even if it wasn't put in a levy, a levy last year, and I believe it should be the duty of this board to correct that with the state, so it reads, you know, 40%. I mean, you wouldn't have corrected that part, but the overall levy should have been 22.3%, not 17.5. And this is with the help of Brady. I wanted to verify my numbers to make sure they were correct. Should have increased 4.8%. But I think that would be a start to make sure that the state knows what our actual levy is, because we all can make mistakes on numbers, and I like to double, triple-check, like in my concrete business. I never said double-check. I said triple-check. And 50 years I was in the contract business, I was never off 150 bucks, ever, on a bid or anything else. But anyway, after what happened at last year's Truth and Taxation meeting, where this board didn't listen to anyone, it all fell on deaf ears. This is all, everybody keeps saying that. But anyway, and then to top it off, you put an additional 4.8% burden on the taxpayers, which was a slap in the face. That's what I just was talking about. This will come back to haunt us in the decades to come, because now every year, like this year now, it's going to affect us by 4%. year now, it's gonna affect us by 4%. And so actually, our levy could've been at, sat at 2% if these outrageous, outrageous increases hadn't occurred. Our 20, uh, our 2019, yeah, could've been, contracts handled, the, these contracts were handled by the county administrator, Jeff Cadwell, who's Jeff Cadwell, Commissioner Severson and Duke Kirk. And here's what they came up with, if anyone is not familiar with the figures. First, a little history. In 2017, county wages, just the county wages, increased 6%, which amounted to 364,513. This was in 2017, the year before 2018. Pay increases in 2018 arranged by these three individuals amounted to a staggering $1 million, not quite. And this was in 11-month, three-year period. It was actually 7,000 shy of the, of the 1 million. So if we go towards the end of the year, I'm guessing it'll be about a million. Which was approximately 15.3% higher than 2017. And this figure doesn't even include the cost of benefits paid to employees, which approximately amounts to $25,000 per employee. Brady and I were discussing this. We didn't come up with an exact figure, but we sort of thought it'd be about an average of 25,000 per employee for the 122 employees. And then if you, and, and if you add that up, that's an extra 3-plus million, to be exact. That'd be $3,500,000 extra to the budget also for just employees, not counting that, that staggering other figure. If this board would've taken the time to research these numbers, we wouldn't be in this mess. So I researched it for you. If anybody on this board is interested in a packet, I've got them. I'll give them to you. I don't feel like I should be having to do your jobs, but I love numbers. I don't have a computer. I don't need a computer. Computers here. You can ask Brady. You know, but anyway, so county commissioners failed to ask for any figures related to the union contracts and, and, and found it convenient not to provide any. And the other commissioners didn't ask for any. And I don't understand that and maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. But that's the way I feel, because when I went through all the board meetings for a whole year, I couldn't find any numbers brought up till August 14th, and that was for asking to amend the budget. To me, that's totally unbelievable, and I believe somebody, and that's the only blame I'll put on Brady. I believe somebody, because he's got the state statute to be an administrator, and these numbers should've been brought up sometime, somewhere, to get the public aware to it and get the rest of the board.
Thank you, Lloyd. Thank you.
You know, uh, timing up. Association of Minnes-
Thank you, Lloyd. Thank you. Your time is up.
What's up?
Five minutes goes fast.
Lloyd, why don't you show me where you are?
Yeah.
And I will continue reading.
Okay.
For my five minutes. Good morning.
I was on too much chemotherapy yesterday, I guess. I'm a little slow at things. But anyway, I was gonna say too, sometimes I wonder what's worse, going through stage four cancer or debating things with you people. Okay, got, yeah, one is done. That's done.
You're right here.
Right there. I have a whole other thing here too. Oh, boy.
Good morning. Ray Peoples.
Sign in, please.
And I've signed in.
Okay. Thank you.
And I appreciate each one of you. I am not the numbers person that Lloyd is. He is a bright guy and he has done due diligence. And I appreciate so much what Ben, was it Peterson, said, you know, in a very, uh, in a very fine attitude. Um, we need to work together. And you, dear people, are our public servants. You've been elected to represent us and to do the very best job that you can. Not an easy job. Nothing's easy. The Association of Minnesota Counties' publication on the duties of a county commissioner states, "Once commissioners know the total expenditures of the county budget, they determine the property tax levy." I truly believe, by their own admission, the full board did not know the total expenditures of the county budget, chiefly the financial impact of these three-year contracts, and still don't. The only reason this has gone on as long as it has is because the public isn't told the truth. It is very obvious, given what we are discovering. Like I said la, said it last year and I'll say it again, this county board and county administrator are the most unqualified and dysfunctional board in the history of Cook County. It is a reality that people are moving out of this county due to escalating property taxes, and we've heard it from several people here and at the Truth in Taxation meeting. To ignore this fact is offensive to these many families. How can you pass the largest pay increase in the history of Cook County and not know what it is going to cost the taxpayer? There is absolutely no excuse for not knowing what a contract will cost. An administrator employed in the private sector would be fired for not revealing this to a board of directors. This board is supposed to oversee the administrator. He is not the elected official, elected to represent taxpayers. The administrator is supposed to be a facilitator, not a dictator. It's evil, says Lloyd. Don't believe me? Look up the dictionary definition of evil. It lists as an example of evil, the evil effects of high taxes. Wow. We're all told there are two things for sure in this left, death and taxes. That's not written in here. This board needs to figure a way to dig us out of this mess. You are going to have to do this on your own, and if you can't do this, you should all resign. If you need help figuring this out, just ask Lloyd. I'll give you my phone number. I have a packet of figures that I will be happy to give you. What a wonderful thing to have somebody who is a numbers guy, who what, has built seven properties, raised, you know, like a whole lot of us with very little money, and has borrowed $7,000 in his whole life. It says an awful lot about working with figures. I hope you will work again to gain, work to gain the public's trust by getting this levy down to zero. When this happens, I will be the first to say, "Thank you." Now, I hope someone on this board will ask for a vote to not pass this levy today and get this 2019 levy down to zero, to make up for all these uncalled-for wage increases in the levy of 2018. And I prayed, you know, if, if the Lord would have me say anything today. We are a country that was founded on godly principles, and we have gone so far from it. Politics are not the answer. Jesus is the answer. But we are told to occupy until he comes. Praise God, he's coming again, but until he comes, we have to keep a roof over our heads and food in the stomachs of our families and be able to, you know, drive where we need to and do the things that life demands and requires. And government responsibility is needs. Law enforcement, roads and bridges, schools.
Ray, thank you.
And thank you.
Hello, I'm Brad Thompson, Grand Prairie, business owner. Um, I guess, I just feel I have to stand up here, uh, just to show other business people that you can come up in front of you. Um, sometimes it does affect your business and your life. I'm gonna say forever. I'm gonna give you an example. About six years ago, I was dealing with a county entity and I questioned, well, you know what county entity. I questioned, uh, the, uh, spring road bans, signs still on in August. And, uh, at the time, the head honcho, uh, decided to take it out on me by telling everybody in the highway department they could no longer frequent my business, even in their personal time. I probably should've gone after this because it's still affecting me today. There's somebody there in one of the departments in that place that still doesn't like me. I don't know why, because I've never had a problem with him. Um, I can understand where business people are afraid to get into, into politics at all. It's just a terrible, wrong thing, and I'm trying to empower other business owners to stand up for what they need. And ditto on everybody's comments today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to be repetitive. I'm Bruce Martinson. And my first, you know, comment, you know, Jenny Storley, you were right, again, I'd say you were right to, you know, try to ask questions on the compensation, you know, package that was negotiated with the employees. And I think that's what, you know, your constituents, you know, want and expect, you know, and thank you for, you know, trying to ask questions at that time. And one other issue to bring up is the, you know, windfall that Cook County received of approximately 761,000 pilt, you know, payments. Of course, talking to Brady, uh, the feds won't tell you, you know, what pilt it's for. You may never know, you know, what it's for. But in the worst-case scenario, that you have to dibble it up because it's rural schools, that's only what, approximately 40%? Maybe part of that, you know, other, you know, money can be used to reduce the 5.99 levy, you know, lower. Of course, other options, try to reduce, you know, some spending also. But I did hear that it was a goal earlier to reduce the levy, you know, to lower than 5%. So maybe we'll consider that later in the day. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, then we will continue on our agenda. We did have some agendas in the back. Um, maybe you can share with everybody and, um, you're welcome to stay as we move along with our agenda. We have next to the highway, which our county engineer, Kristin Foster, is going to, yes, we do need to do that first. Consent agenda items. Motion to approve as a whole.
I'll make that motion.
Can I hear a second?
Will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Good morning, Kristin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, colleagues and members of the public. I'm here today to talk about the state Safe Roads to School funds applications, which are due at the beginning of January. The current solicitation, we are requesting 208,000, which is an estimated 100% to construct a trail connection on the west side of Gunflint Trail between Highway 61 and CASA 7. Last week, I met with some representatives from Great Expectations School. I've reached out to the school district as well, and I will be coordinating with the city here in the next few weeks if today's resolution is approved to submit this application. Given these few steps and given your support of applying for these grant funds, I would request Administrator Cadwell sign the application due at the beginning of January. Now, there is a line in the resolution that you'll notice. It says, "By submitting this application, Cook County secures and guarantees the local costs associated with the project." As I mentioned, we are requesting 100% support for this project. This is an opportunity to potentially bring in some outside funding that aligns with our system priorities. This trail isn't planned to be constructed if we don't get this grant. Uh, the local share would apply if the bids came in higher than expected, if we are able to get the grant. Um, but at this point, we aren't expecting that. If that did happen, it would be eligible for Cook County's state aid allocation and not local funds. We aren't quite at the point of designing the details, uh, but a big picture, look at the trail. Again, it connects the block between Highway 61 and CASA 7 in front of Great Expectations School on the west side of CASA 12, the Gunflint Trail, with a 10-foot paved trail. There are some utility relocation expenses that would be included in the project, and the estimate for that has been included in that cost estimate as well. So if there are any questions, I would be glad to provide what details we have at this time, but we're in the very early stages for asking for state support to help us deliver this project.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we don't, or you know what the grant would be, the grant application?
Commissioner Storley, yes. We have a full copy of the grant application. We would require resolutions of support from the school board and the city as well, in addition to today's resolution. So there are several pieces to line up in the next few weeks.
Okay. So it is a group effort?
Yes.
Thank you. So we will start with questions or comments. Commissioner Severson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And, um, thank you, Kristin, for bringing this to us. And this is a, a really great example of how we work really hard to bring in money from the outside to help families, um, to recruit families to come and live here, because Cook County is a great place to live and to retain the families that live here. So I just wanna mention that in lieu of all the comments that were made this morning, that we don't care about young families. We, we absolutely do. This is one fine example. So thank you.
Commissioner Bruchan?
Well, it's very worthwhile and thank you for your work and for all of those in the community working together to make this a safer place for our young people.
To answer your question, Commissioner Storley, this has been a top priority of the Active Living Steering Committee. It's been on our list for, I believe, at least five years. We've had other projects come up. Our previous highway engineer and our current highway engineer have been aware of this project, and obviously with the restrictions of funding and other resources and not having grants available in other projects that were on the list prior, this has often been taken off of the list, put on hold and removed, much like our project in front of the hospital that took a lot of work to get that done. So this is a joint effort. As you are all aware, the Active Living Steering Committee has members of our highway department, our county board, our school, GES and ISD 166 and the city. It is a huge partnership. It also has community members on that committee that have been working towards this. So Kristin, thank you. I know that this was the work of your predecessor, but I know that you took his work very seriously when you stepped into the position, and you are moving forward with the requests of the community. So thank you.
Commissioner Shoup?
Uh, Safe Roads to School is a great program. Hopefully, we can get the grant to get this taken care of.
Motion to approve.
Can I hear a second? Any further discussion, comments? Thank you so much and we'll look forward to you.
Thank you for your time.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Next, we have Radio Communication User Policy by Rena. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Madam Chair. Excuse me. So, um, this is, this shouldn't take very long. It's, um, one of those things that I'm continuing to work on, policies. It's one of those mundane but necessary parts of county government. It helps us, um, do our job, um, the way we're supposed to do it, and it reduces liability for the county. So this, this particular policy, which I'm bringing for you, before you today, um, is a radio communication policy for our user community that uses our radios. We have approximately 700 radios out there, both mobile and, um, and handheld devices. We have approximately 700 radios out there, both mobile and, um, and handheld devices. Those are used not only by county employees, like the sheriff's office and the highway department, um, but also by many, many volunteers in this community. So this is, um, kind of codifies what they've already been told, uh, in their training and when they learn to use these radios, but it, um, just hammers out the basic rules and responsibilities and, um, highlights the various policies that both at the federal level and the state armor level, um, that, that they need to, to do. It also defines pretty clearly, is there like an echo in here?
Uh-huh.
Put that over there somewhere. Um, it also defines, um, the role of, Rowan's role as the, as the, um, radio communication person who is in charge of training and, and communicating about all of this. So I would be happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Thank you on all that updating, and it takes a lot of work to get things organized and reorganized and rewritten and all of that. So appreciate all your work in that. So we'll open it up for, um, questions or comments. Commissioner Dushaw?
Um, yeah, we worked on this at the Public Safety Board, and I think it's a good policy. Just, it's pretty clean and...
Thanks, Paul.
Commissioner Duker?
Thank you, Rena. This has been a long time process since you came on board with us to get all of our policies up to date and programs together. And, uh, I did stop in and thank Rowan this morning, but I will publicly thank him. When I was done with the civility project last night, driving home, his vehicle was here at 8:30 at night because he was out training community members and doing radio work. And so I was pleased to hear that he was doing radio work and not fixing something that was broken. That's nice to hear, but, um, the dedication of the staff in the late hours, he has young children and a family that he should be having dinner with, and he's supporting our community. So thank you. I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Commissioner Burchette?
Well, again, thanks for your work, and, uh, along with Commissioner Dushaw. I serve on the committee that's been discussing this, and we've gone through some drafts and so forth. And I think the process has really been thorough, and we've tried to work out those issues that are problematic, but also to look at opportunities in which will benefit the county, but also the users. So thanks for your work, and especially to Rowan and your department.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thank you.
Commissioner Severson? Um, thank you, Madam Chair. And, um, again, I wanna ditto what they're saying about thanking. Um, I've worked with Rowan on several, um, in several committees, and he is a very thorough, um, young person who, um, does good work, um, and he's doing great work too. Thank you very much, Rena. Um, and particularly in this very geographically challenged, large geographic area, um, that we need to cover. We, um, our communications is very important, so taking the time and the, um, thoughtfulness that went into creating this policy is very good. So I support it, and I would like to make the motion to approve this, uh, radio communication user policy.
Second. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Rena.
So the next item on our agenda is called Speak Your Peace. Last night, about 20 of us gathered at the city hall to hear a presentation by the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation. And all of you have probably seen the little cards, the little green cards that were passed out. And, um, I would just ask you to look at the back nine different areas of how we conduct ourselves in the public. Um, it was enlightening, and it was encouraging, that we have folks who, um, do the presentations in a variety of communities within Minnesota and out of state. So I would ask them to come forward and to give a presentation to the greater group here, and also know that because we are recorded, then it will go out into the community when people, um, view our board meeting.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman and Board members. Um, thank you also to the community members who have here, who are here and who have been here. My name's Rob Karwath. I'm a consultant to the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation. I'm here with Monica Bruning, who is the chief operating officer, and we were, uh, fortunate to be able to spend some time with many of you and others in the community last night. Um, Speaker Peace is a, a project, as I told you last night, I was initially skeptical about. I was editor of the Duluth News Tribune when Speaker Peace came about, and somewhat new to the community, uh, certainly knew as editor of the, of the paper. And I was excited to hear that there was a program to, um, enhance civil discord, uh, civil discourse, not civil discord, in our community. Civil discord was how it was, was happening in Duluth, if you remember Duluth in 2003 and 2004. When I saw that this program fit on the back of a business card, um, I was a little skeptical. When I read the nine tenets, I was really skeptical. And I said, as I told you last night, I don't think this is gonna work. But I sit here today in front of you as, uh, the skeptic that's become the evangelist. I've seen it work. I saw it work in Duluth and Superior. I've seen it work in communities across the country, uh, and around our region, that we've had the good fortune to work with. And, um, it's, it's interesting being here today and seeing the challenges and discussion in your community. I will say, you should feel good about the fact that you have an engaged community. There is engagement here, and while we don't all agree on everything, um, the fact that people are involved is a good sign. Um, Speaker Peace started 15 years ago, uh, even to this day, in our region, the hometown of Speaker Peace, or the home region of Speaker Peace, it's often seen as, well, let's just be nice. Uh, we won't say what we really think. Um, let's sit on our hands, and let's just pretend we're, we're all getting along in community. And that is not what Speaker Peace is about. The first word tells you that it's not about that. It's about speaking. It's about trying to get conversations and dialogue going, but it's also about understanding that if we're sitting here fighting and calling names and, um, calling people evil, I, that, that's probably not one of the things that is really reflected by Speaker Peace. And sometimes you have to say that doesn't advance our conversation. Although, if you feel that way, let's talk about why you're feeling that way. Speaker Peace is a way for us to have conversations and move community forward. I was asked by a television reporter a couple years ago, what is it in a nutshell? And it is a way, I feel, for communities to advance themselves further and faster than other communities, if they're following Speaker Peace the right way. We can have conversations. We can work through difficult issues. We are going to have, to have conversations and difficult ones sometimes, but we can work through them. And people will gravitate to places where folks can solve problems. Um, and I think you guys are prime for adopting Speaker Peace. Um, we have had, uh, six units of government in Duluth and Superior adopted. The school boards in Duluth and Superior, the city councils in Duluth and Superior, the county boards in Duluth and Superior, and many other communities across the country have adopted it. I think, um, a way for Cook County to make a statement and say, "We believe in this," would be to pass, um, a resolution along the lines of our model resolution. And I understand that's something you're considering today. It's, um, I won't say an easy first step, but it is a first step toward bringing the community together and saying, "This is how we will operate, um, as a county board and as a, as a community." As I mentioned last night, the real power in Speaker Peace is the power of civic engagement. I don't think I'm gonna win every battle. Most folks here probably don't believe that either. And as I said also last night, I'm glad that I don't win every time, 'cause my ideas are not always the best. Sometimes you have an idea that's better. Sometimes we together, uh, or we as a group can come up with an idea that's better than any one of us collectively could have come up with. But it all starts with civic engagement. If we don't have all of the brains in the game, if we don't have all of the, um, thinking, uh, coming to bear on issues, problems, opportunities, we're not going to come up with better solutions. If the playing field is civil, and even if I don't think I'm gonna win every time, I'll come back and play again. I think most people are willing to, to accept that proposition as well. I just wanna be treated civilly. Everybody in the audience here probably would say the same thing. I think you on the board and the staff, the administration of the county would, would say the same thing. It's a basic human need. So the tenets of Speaker Peace are really simple. It says on the back of the card, "Today I will," which is important, because I can't make you civil. I can only make me civil. But today, I will pay attention, listen, be inclusive, not gossip, show respect, be agreeable, and that doesn't mean just agree to everything. It means be open to compromise, apologize, give constructive criticism, and take responsibility. And these are such basic human needs that this program works because I want them, you want them, we all want them. And if we can create a playing field where we respect those, and sometimes have to correct ourselves, that's why apologize is one of them, I'll come to the table. Most people will come to the table. We'll bring resources, we'll bring ideas, we'll bring funds, we'll bring, uh, new approaches that maybe we hadn't considered individually. One of the examples I like to give about Duluth, and if you remember Duluth in 2003, 2004, we were teetering on the verge of bankruptcy in Duluth. We were in bad shape. A new mayor and a new city council came in. They followed the tenets of Speaker Peace. They adopted that model ordinance, and slowly but surely began to bring Duluth, Duluth out of, of a difficult circumstance. One small story to me kind of illustrates the power of Speaker Peace. The city, at that point, operated a number of community centers and community programs, and, uh, said we're going to have to unfortunately shut them down. Duluth is a city of neighborhoods, lots of things happening in the neighborhoods. The city said we could no longer afford to, to do children's programming, adult exercise programs in the neighborhoods. But because the, the playing field was civil, and because we weren't fighting at city council meetings and calling each other names, the YMCA came to the table and said, "You know, we've been looking for a way to get out of our downtown headquarters and into the neighborhoods. We can't run all of your community centers, but we can probably put programming in a good half dozen of them." And so, uh, to this day, uh, the Woodland Community Center, where my significant other teaches, uh, fitness classes, yoga and Pilates, she'll be teaching tomorrow night from 6:30 to 7:30. She works for the YMCA. And a civil playing field allowed the YMCA to come to the table, offer to take, uh, and, and provide some resources to take responsibility off the city. And to this day, uh, the Woodland Community Center lights are on and activities are happening because of the YMCA. The YMCA probably wouldn't have come to the table if we were still fighting at the city council like we were in 2003 and 2004 in Duluth. And I think that's a great example of even within communities, resources exist that can be tapped if we create a civil playing field. Brains in the game and resources are really, um, all about the civic engagement. Last night, I gave a little bit of a summary of Speaker Peace. Uh, we did some brainstorming with, uh, community members about how we can actually, how we could perhaps, uh, see this play out in the community, um, some projects that we could perhaps get behind and the Community Foundation might actually support with funding. That was encouraging. Um, I think a great first step for this body and this county today would be to consider, and perhaps even to move forward in passing that model resolution. Uh, and then making sure you're following through and living up to it, um, not just putting the poster on the wall or talking about it. And that means everyone in the county recognizing that when we come here and when we see each other on the street, that we are committed as neighbors. We have more in common as residents of Cook County, as residents of northeastern Minnesota, than we, uh, do otherwise. We're, we're neighbors. We're, we all will, do we all not want the county to succeed? Do we all not want young families to, to find themselves comfortable and thriving in our community? Um, it's just a matter of how we get there. And that's open for debate, and it should be open for debate, but how we have that debate really is, is important. So I would encourage you, as a first step, to consider that resolution. I would also encourage you, as a second and third step, to think about, uh, how a Speaker Peace campaign in our community, not a rah-rah cheerleader, do-gooder, but a, "Let's make our community healthy and have healthy debate" campaign could make folks feel better and also could improve the tenor of debate and discussion. And then let's talk about that kind of project that we've discussed last night. One of the ideas was to find ways to engage people who don't feel engaged, who feel overlooked. It's a time of change in our world, and a lot of people are feeling left behind, are feeling that folks are not listening to them, are feeling disenfranchised. We want their voice in the conversation, but it just has to fit in the conversation in a civil way. Uh, another project that we talked about was the possibility of, of kind of an intergenerational, um, campaign where we told stories about what we love about Cook County, with older people saying, "Here's why I love living here. Here's why I moved here decades ago. Here's why I've stayed." And with young people, some, uh, along the lines of the, the young man who got up and spoke, "Here's why I wanna stay. Here's why I want to be here. I like to see the stars at night. I like to watch Lake Superior and, uh, hear the birds chirping in the spring." All of the things. I like a, a place where I don't have to have a 45-minute commute to work, uh, unless I really want one, I guess. But that kind of campaign that could bring the community together, we could hear some, you know, similarities through the generations and through the stories. Whatever that campaign or that program is, I think the Community Foundation, um, stands ready to support it and certainly consider it. The Community Foundation, uh, sees Cook County as part of its region, and Monica has been up here many times, uh, and Jeff is part of, of, of the board of the local, um, nonprofit associated with our group. But we're here to, to, to do good in the community and help you guys, uh, find the right outlets for that. So, um, that would be another step to consider down the road. You have a lot, um, here that, um, to be appreciative and thankful for, um, even sometimes when we hear debate that gets a little difficult to hear. The fact that people are coming forward and discussing it with us, I think, is a positive sign. And if we could maybe just train some of that, um, energy in the right direction, uh, we can get down the road further. Speaker Peace, as I told you last night, has not failed to work. It has worked every place that we have used it in, uh, the last 15 years, from, uh, Oregon and California and Texas to Eau Claire, Wisconsin, Fergus Falls, Minnesota, Ashland, Wisconsin, Duluth, Superior. We continue to use it in Duluth and Superior. In fact, uh, if you've been following the developments in Duluth, sick and safe time was a very difficult conversation for the city of Duluth. Uh, the recent protests in the city council chamber, difficult. But Duluth recently restated its support for Speaker Peace by re, um, adopting the ordinance, added a little more modern language in a couple places, but basically said, "This has served us well, and we believe it will continue to serve us well." I think it would serve Cook County well, too. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Um, we do have a resolution before us, but I will open it up for questions or comments, um, before we, uh, look into that. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, um, thank you for, um, coming up and, um, presenting to us last night and involving us in a, um, an experience. It was, um, the talking is great, and the stories are fabulous. Um, but the real meat is when you break, you know, break into small groups and actually try to do the process. And, um, it always reveals, um, your own personal kind of weakness or, um, thing that, that you need to work on. And so, um, and it's always, uh, because the, it starts out with "Today I will," it really forces that self-accountability. Um, and I know that I've participated in, um, many groups over the years, um, here to do great work. And I think that this probably wasn't the first time that, um, the group, or at least the group leaders, um, had, have used this, because most of the groups that I've worked with have tried to be mo-most of these things. But there's always room for improvement, and clearly, with, um, this morning's, um, presentation, there, there is, um, people are being, I don't, I wouldn't say left out of the conversation, but there are things that need to change, so that, um, everybody can be at the table and have the conversation, everybody, including us, um, so that we don't just feel like we're, we just have to receive all of this, that we have an opportunity to also speak our truths and our peace. So, um, I'm... So, I'm very happy to, that this has come before us and happy to adopt it when the time comes here. Thank you.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Well, thank you so much to your foundation and coming, spending the time. I would agree that we need to do something. And as I listened last night, I, toward the end, I think I said, yeah, I'm getting this. So, it took me a while. I've had some experience in the past where, it was in schools where we had agreed to govern, set up a governance in certain issues of administration by consensus. And in order to do that, we had to, it was a group of people, we had to work through a lot of these issues. One of the issues that I found, and I don't know if this should belong in it, but it maybe is here indirectly or inclusively, but it's strive to understand. And I would like maybe see that in here as number 10, but it doesn't have to be. I think, you know, like this morning, in other meetings we have, I hear in a community we don't have enough dialogue. And so, if we can create some kind of avenue for dialogue, and sometimes government, maybe not the place for that, but it could be elsewhere. Dialogue is very important. We used to use the paraphrasing, saying, I hear you understand that, and so that we acknowledge people, you know. By understanding other people doesn't mean we necessarily agree. We can agree to disagree because we come from a different place, we view things, taxes are looked at very differently, and we'll see that and have seen that. Sometimes it's political, sometimes it's taking a different view of long-term financial planning, and people look at it differently. They have a right to their opinion. And so, we all have different experiences, different training backgrounds, but we have a right to do that. So, I think if we can work forward with this, it would be good for all of us. We need your help, so I hope you'll be there with us along the way.
The foundation sees you and this community, Cook County, as part of its community. So, there's an active nonprofit arm of the Community Foundation here and a willingness on our part to help in a consulting role if need be and actually helping bring some of this into fruition.
One more comment. Thanks. You know, I would like to just think also that we can disagree, but we don't have to be enemies. You know, we don't have to hate each other. We can respect each other as human beings and still disagree. And so, my afterthought, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Commissioner Dukirk?
Thank you for coming and doing the presentation last night. I will support this resolution. I know that it works because when I was elected, this was a horrible place to sit, and the way that we treated each other was incredibly horrible. And so, we've already taken some of these steps as a board, and it just automatically transferred as new commissioners came in. We all, because some of us were practicing it, you just automatically learn to do it, and the new commissioners were never actually taught the steps. But we all use them in our meetings, so I know it works. And I like that you want to add to them, Commissioner Bershaim, but there will be people here after us, and I would like to keep it the way it is so that it continues to forward to the next boards that come after us.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Yeah, I went to the thing last, Speak Your Peace thing last night. I think this is, you know, we just got presented this 15 hours ago. I would actually make a motion to table this. I'd like to talk to some of my peers in other counties that use this to see how it does work before I make a decision on it.
Is that a motion, Commissioner DeShaw?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have a motion before us to table this for Commissioner DeShaw. What does now mean? Next meeting, next year?
We have one meeting until next year, so.
Right.
Maybe on the 8th or whenever that is.
You'd like to table it until our next meeting in January?
Yeah, that first meeting.
Okay. So we have a motion to table this until the meeting in, first meeting in January.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this?
I would just like to, I'm making a personal comment here. I would like to see this passed before I leave the board in this month. That's my only personal. But I don't think it'll change. I do believe that it'll pass in January, so I don't, it's not a big issue to me. So, if it'll make you feel more comfortable and willing to, and obviously it would.
Well, I'd like to discuss it with other people that have used it, you know. Like I say, we just got it presented to us at 6 o'clock last night, so.
That would probably be the quickest adoption of Speak Your Peace. But we certainly can put you in touch with others. Again, I think Duluth's experience just in the last few months is very fresh in their mind, and they approached us and said, we need, you know, some help, and we listened to what was happening there, why they felt that need. I think there are a number of different communities. I've talked with you guys about Sisters, Oregon, I think some of the very similar situations, different issues in Sisters, but kind of a similarly engaged community. They would be happy to talk with you, but we could probably come up easily with a list of half dozen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, my comments before, I think if we wait a month, I don't think I'm going to change my mind, but I think we have to respect that process. And so, it's, I don't think it's, speaking anything negatively about this is that we need to look at this and give each of us a chance, and so, that's why it's important.
Any further comments, Commissioner? Okay. So we have a motion and a second to table this until our first meeting in January, so we'll have that in the minutes. All in favor of that, by aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you'll notice that we've had this poster up for, I don't know, five years, six years? We're now getting around to having it explained to us, which unfortunately is kind of the way the government has gone. Let's hope it doesn't continue that way in the future. Okay, so moving on to extension assessor appointment, extension of the assessor appointment. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just reviewing the situation in the timeline, you have in your packet a letter from the Department of Revenue from Gail Zimmerman, reminding us of the situation that we have with the appointment of our assessor. We have, we have Todd Smith here. Todd, you can come forward in case we have any questions. But when we appointed Todd as assessor, it was with a two-year period for him to receive his senior credentials, and we ran into a snag in getting those accomplished. Todd is working with his peers and with the state to get those credentials back in, no, October, when we haven't, when the state declared the vacancy in our assessor because he didn't receive those credentials. Then the auditor has the authority to appoint somebody to those duties for up to a 90-day period, and Brady Powers did appoint Todd Smith to fulfill those duties during that period. We're confident that we can get the credentialing done before the end of this 90-day extension, but we do have to ask, the board does have to ask the state for a 90-day extension of that appointment, temporary appointment period for him to get his credentials. I know it's complicated, but. Brady, do you have anything to add to that? I mean, we're just extending this from December 26 to March 26 so that Todd can finish the paperwork and the review of the paperwork and the submitting of the documentation to be certified as a senior.
That's, that's it in a nutshell.
Todd, do you want to add anything to that?
Just given the timing of the whole thing, when I was informed that I would have to complete this project in order to get my senior accreditation, I found out later on that the grading of the project could take four to six weeks, so there was no way we could meet the timeline by December 28. So, the logical thing to do is to ask for an extension till March 28.
And so you feel it'll be doable in this timeframe?
Yes.
Get your.
Two months was not realistic.
Yeah, to do everything else that you do, too.
Right, exactly.
Okay, any comments or questions, Commissioner Severson?
No comments, makes sense to me.
Commissioner Bershaim? Commissioner Dukirk?
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Just, Madam Chair, just to clarify, the motion would be then to ask for the extension and authorize me to send the letter that's drafted in the packet to the director, or Commissioner of Revenue.
That's my motion.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Madam Chair, just a, because we have the members of the EDA board here, maybe we would switch D and C, and perhaps we could take a break before we move on?
We'll take a five-minute break then. Yeah.
Don't even know if we received the standard.
Could I make a spell that right? Could I make a couple of comments?
Let me just write this down here. So, it's already.
Are these your glasses? Not mine.
They're not Rob's, they're not yours.
I was chair of the County Community Fund for 10 years. When I first joined, it was just kind of, it was in there. So those are already, it was left in there, it's that. And if soon, everything else was.
It's all a process.
It is. Forty-two and a half percent is what's available.
Okay, my comment on regards to this, it's all well and good, but it needs to be, it needs to, they need to be responsible for these items as well as the public, because we have not felt like we were being listened to. Huge, I have been met with silence multiple times, and I think that is so disrespectful. And transparency, transparency is not there. We've got an item on our list, they're wanting to bundle.
Yeah, if, yeah.
Items in $2,000 bundles. That is not transparency whatsoever. I'm really.
So would it, you know, how it would be, it's a struggle, it's not like, you know, inoculation in a good civil.
Take the 170 and then take the 140.
I would come up 364 when you think of it.
I just want it very clear that it is not a.
Next week, I think at 10 o'clock, we're going to have a little cake, and then at 10:30, we're going to convene a short meeting after the Human Services Board meeting, because the gap between May and January, this is not enough for human pay bills on time. So I don't know, maybe we'll do.
We have a little bit of business, but mostly we're getting.
And it was just, and it's so disrespectful.
I know, we're social.
Yeah, I can take a few lessons. Yeah, I mean, lesson, lesson, wanting to be social.
I know, wherever you are.
Great.
I'm sorry you didn't get up this quick.
That would be suspicious.
All right, we will, thank you.
If she does read, it's more of a question.
Mm-hmm. I know we use it. I know Jay, we're done it. Hi, thank you.
You said St. Louis County adopted it?
WTIP. I don't need it because we, I learned it five, six years ago with our former administrator, and I know it works, but it can.
Apparently it is, because nobody was shown to represent the county.
I know, I know. I've had conversations with Harry Puth, and we are definitely taking it for granted. And actually, the government is taking it for granted. That's why I hope we can take some time today just to answer some of those issues. I hope we may not answer.
We can take all the time we need to.
Yeah. Because there's, that's what, we need to be heard.
My dog is about 1:30.
We can't, yes, we're personnel.
If you did, then I need it.
No, I got it, that's where I got it. I got it orally.
It's not that we didn't have a couple things that couldn't be done, that had to be done. Really, really, I'm feeling a hand should be straightened.
Yes, that's, yeah.
Somebody's got to. Yeah. This whole idea, just context, always amazed at something so good, you know, just isn't right in this time. Taking away our first appearance.
Yeah.
I'm amazed that it has stayed as raw.
Adios. Thanks for coming up. Thanks so much.
Be in touch, too, about some other places. Yeah, thanks, thank you for going and talking to me. That'll be, that'll be very helpful.
So you're going to do that now? Oh, fantastic, fantastic. Yeah, 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 yeah. The newspaper one, you can do that? I'm just kidding. Anyway, you know.
There's no reason that we don't extend this invitation, so maybe a next step would be for Bob to summarize the program.
right in this time, so we're just taking it where we're first to be.
Yeah.
I think we always, we always go, come on, he tells the people that's here, he's always pretty worried about stuff, it's like, okay, also, yeah, last night he was making a few remarks with his voice, but this morning, before I got here, I was thinking, we need to keep some words, we are speaking here.
It's amazing that it has stayed as raw as it has.
Adios. Thanks for coming up. That's right. Thanks so much.
Be in touch too about some other places.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thanks, thank you for going and talking to me. That'll be, that'll be very helpful.
So you're going to do that now? Oh, fantastic, fantastic. Yeah, 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 yeah. The newspaper one, you can do that? I'm just kidding. Anyway, you know.
There's no reason that we don't extend this invitation, so maybe a next step would be for Bob to summarize the program, and a sample draft resolution, that we can still get to the other whores, and they can be considering it as we're considering it. You know, a three-week delay doesn't change anything. As a matter of fact, it's probably a good process.
Yes, yeah. And actually, in having Commissioner Dishaw's approval, because it's, I know I've heard this, and you've had it yesterday, so I mean, I'd expect for- Do you have like a press release, she could just send down this piece? That would be awesome. Yeah, this is normally what you do. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 that's how it's kind of, it's like, I'm not grateful for it, not at all.
It needs support some day.
Yes, exactly, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's, to me, my friend.
Yes, yeah, 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 oh, yeah, 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 awesome. Yeah, yeah.
Why don't you give me a deadline? Seriously, that's the best, so let me see. Yelled her yesterday. And rabbit. Um, it's a term, I haven't looked at it yet, so I'll talk to her.
I'm gonna have a few words first. On it there, Ms. Chair.
Okay, we're going to reconvene our meeting, and I guess we need to make sure that we speak into our microphone, for whatever reason, thank you, Mike, thumbs up, can you hear us now? Or at least me? We just assume the microphone is here, and it'll be picked up, and all of that, but it isn't always the case. Coming to the table too, folks, we're being heard better than up here. So, we're entering now a phase of our board meeting where we've heard your public comments and concerns, and now we will be discussing EDA, our budget, all of that among ourselves, so there will be no interaction with the audience, I just want to let you know that, because we have heard and made notes, and we will bring, as we have always done, things to the forefront about your concerns, and we'll be discussing that also. So we have the next on our agenda, we're going to EDA budget, because you folks are here and have waited very patiently for us to acknowledge you and to hear your report, and we have three, three folks here from EDA, we have four, okay? I'm not here. I'm just support. Okay, one of you will be speaking, I'm hopeful. EDA is, oh, wait. Fifty-one. Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, Board, I didn't prepare anything, I just came here to answer questions, if there are any on our budget.
Okay, we have-
I could give you a long report of what we're doing, but I don't know if that's necessary.
You could give us a short one.
It's all about housing. We've got the first unit on the Toffey rental, not Toffey, Lutzen rentals, set and being worked on, the second one is being set as we speak, the third one will start being set next week, and the last one will be early January. We have four market-rate houses that are sold, and I think occupied, in town. The four more are on the market for sale and being ready for occupancy. That's all going, it's a, it's sort of like watching sausage being made, it's a, it's a hard process to watch, but, you know, tastes good at the end, and, you know, like any construction project, it's, it's slow and tedious, and you have bumps in the road, but it's all coming together, and by spring, we'll have sixteen market-rate rentals in Lutzen, and eight brand-new houses here that are, hopefully we have happy families in.
Okay.
Besides that, we've been, we have the conduit for writing grants to mostly IRRB, a lot of exciting things going on. We just, yesterday learned that we got a grant for the Y for redoing fixing new bathrooms, new bathrooms.
For the childcare.
For childcare, that'll add, give them additional twenty, capacity for another twenty children there, so that, we're cognizant of the need for daycare, and, you know, we're not doing the heavy lifting, but doing our part in helping with that, plus a variety of other things that we're into. So, thank you.
Thank you too. So I'll open it up for questions or comments. Commissioner-
I'll pass at the moment.
Commissioner DuKirk?
You forgot the assistance of building blocks and the hard work that our administrator did to help out Bruce Block with his housing project. We're not only doing our own projects, but we're doing everything we can to assist others who are working on this project. When we did the Go Team study years ago, when I first started, we were told we needed to have twenty-two new units per year to meet the need six years ago, and so it's taken a long time to get here, but we're, it's like making sausage.
It is.
Mr. Burscham?
Well, thanks to all of you on the EDA Board, and I know that when I ran for office, one of my platforms was housing, so you've done well, from my own political point of view, but I think from a community standpoint, this is a real challenge for us. I know we talked about it last night in our group, on just one of the issues in the county, and trying to provide for those that don't have the financial means to buy some of our expensive homes, and we're trying to help those that need a little help, and become a productive part of our community and community.
Commissioner Seabornson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to say thank you to all the extraordinarily hard work that's been done to create the housing that we have in process and built today. We are a very unusual county, having just come from the Association of Minnesota Counties' annual conference. I attended many housing, the housing is, is the number-one concern across the nation, not just Cook County. And that coupled with the demographics and what we're facing in the next ten years, with the baby boomers leaving, the job force, the workforce becomes a critical, critical issue, and without housing, you can't get the workforce that you need to keep the businesses running, to keep government running, to keep the schools in place, et cetera, et cetera. It's a, an enormous challenge. And it was interesting to listen to one of the county commissioners, who's sort of leading, leading the way with housing, talk about, you need to have government partnership with private partnership with nonprofit partnership, and that's exactly what has come together here in our EDAs. So, I would say that, you know, our EDAs sort of has been kind of the model for, for this really great work, and it's not happening in every county, and they're looking to us with kind of amazement. And so, looking at this budget, I see that it's very conservative, and what's still working toward doing the good work.
Built on our recognition of, of the challenges that you folks have, you know, when it's on the levy front, and then also built on our own capacity, you know, probably this year we'll be catching a breath and finishing the projects, but we've got some thoughts in the works, you know, maybe HRA authority, there's some things we can move forward faster on, and we'll be deliberating over that in the next six months, and we'll see whether we want to come with a bigger ask next year.
Yeah, that's-
We'll look for a base.
It won't be my issue, but-
Poor kids have me on my committee, and my answer is no all the time.
Yeah, so I mean, we do have the checks and balances in place, and we do have our representatives from every place in the county, so that is working, the system's working, but also our extraordinary citizens who are serving on these boards and committees are making sort of an amazing thing happen, which I'm really excited about. And I just also, because of this-
It's here, it's here.
And Mary Sammons too, coming from all of your experience, you know, working on the range with the IRRB, which their name is currently something else, but hearing all the comments this morning, it's, I understand the frustrations, I don't, but when you have the knowledge that we have from attending all these conferences, and talking with other commissioners from the rest of the state, seeing the demographics, talking with people about the challenges that are coming down the pike really quickly, not, not very long-term, we have to look at the numbers quite differently. And when you have a group of individuals that are willing to work on a board such as the EDA, and take the criticism, and also produce the really good results, I just feel grateful to be here and have that good work happening, and I also understand the frustration of the folks that don't understand. The context that we have to put things in is quite different than the context that you have to put things in. So, we could have more conversations around that, I think the speak, your piece would work a little bit better, and we could maybe find that common ground. But anyway, I've said way too much, thank you for the work that you are doing.
Thanks for the affirmation.
Okay, thank you. So we have before us a, to approve the 2019 EDA budget as presented. So I, excuse me, I would make the motion to approve the 2019 EDA budget as presented. Support.
Any further comments or questions? Commissioner DuKirk?
Just a reminder, when you look at what the EDA is bringing in this year, we have an actual budget of 1.4 million of projects. So, thank you for the work, that was not easy to do, and it's not something, when you look through the past, that we were able to accomplish. So, that's money in our community.
So that, the money, the budget has been, is being deeply leveraged, deeply leveraged. That is not an easy thing to pull off, so thank you, I agree.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we will move then into the next part of our agenda, which is discussing and looking at and talking about the 2019 county budget and levy. So I'd like to say that we have heard many comments and concerns this morning, and as we discuss this, I would like to have them addressed as best we can, either from a board
member, or from Administrator Cadwell, or from Auditor Brady. However you'd like to start.
Madam Chair, if I could, as a point of context related to the three-year employment contracts that were authorized starting in January of this year, one of the elements that has not been discussed is the fact that the employees are now responsible for 20% of their health care, and out of the amount of money that was given in increases, $400,000 is being asked back in employee share of health insurance. So the health insurance contribution, the compensation package for the, for the employees over the course of that term, and is not significantly higher than if we had just left that out, and just gone on two-and-a-half percent and continued forward. There were several other pieces that came into play. We had done a compensation study that did in fact show that we were at the 90th percentile of our peer group. Of course, that, that 90th percentile moves every year, and if you look at statistics and averages, public sector is probably going up more than two-and-a-half percent, which our contracts call for next year and the year after, they're probably going up a little bit higher than that, that's a conservative number. We also negotiated from eight pay scales down to one, a single pay scale, and we put all of our employees, short of, including our elected officials, on the same, on the same pay scale, which is, which is a really interesting and unique thing. There were, we had three primary employment groups, and our law enforcement group had been ahead of the curve for the other negotiating units. When we negotiated to the point of going to a single pay scale, adopting the new classification study, and we proposed what that would look like, which, our proposal was a two-and-a-half percent increase, and then round up to the new classification, the step, just above what their current pay was. Back in 2016, 2017, we allowed one-and-a-half percent residual component for the implementation of the comp study, because we knew that there would be some rounding above the actual percentage given. And that was, I think, in 2017 knocked down to 0.75 percent, because we knew we wouldn't be implementing until at least the end of 2017. The, when we got right down to brass tacks in negotiating with one of our units, the law enforcement group, and we proposed what we proposed, every single one of those employees would have been frozen for three years, because they had negotiated ahead of the scale for the rest of the group. And they, they are the ones that proposed the longevity pay as a way to get around that. So what ended up happening with the law enforcement group is the longevity pay allowed them to continue to receive cost of living increases beyond, from where they were currently being paid, to what they were going to be paid. The, the longevity increases then were also asked for by the other groups in negotiation. The CCA, the local Cook County Employees Association, made an additional plea, and they demonstrated, and they demonstrated good facts that showed that a sheriff's deputy with five years of experience with Cook County, who is classified the same as a social worker in Cook County, was paid three dollars an hour more than a social worker with the same amount of experience with the county. So the last element of the last contract that was agreed to was, was an additional step increase for everybody that was in the CCA, and I believe that you were aware of those components of that, or we discussed those components. The sheriff's deputies on, on whole still make more for their time, for their experience with the county than, than the social workers do, but the gap has been closed significantly. Also, looking forward, and I'll, and I'll share this information, and I appreciate the questions, that by the time we get to this end of the contract, the, the compensation package, wages and benefits, will level out to what they were in 2017. Yes, there was an adjustment up in wages, but there was an adjustment down in the cost of benefits. That, having the employee group have 20% ownership in the cost of their benefits, means that now we have an active employee benefits program, an employee benefits committee, and they meet and they talk about discussions, how are we going to manage our health care costs? How are we going to work together to make sure that we have this? Without having that ownership, when I started here, employees didn't have, didn't pay anything for their health insurance, which, which is very uncommon even in public sector at this point. So the 20% share is, is, is right in the ballpark of what our peers are doing. So, I will share with you what those numbers actually look like. To me, from my first inkling, it looks to me that by the end of our 2020 year, the last year of our contract, our compensation budget will be a half a percent higher than it would have been if we not changed anything else, but that's also assuming that we would have managed health care costs to be less than 10% increases, and I don't know that we can assume that. We know what we had for an increase two years ago, we know what the city got for an increase this year. We largely are in a, in a reactionary mode related to health care costs. Short of, of reducing the benefits that we afford to our employees, we, we, we've made the best decisions that we could. I will also address Mr. Speck's comments this morning that says we should adjust our budget for 2018 to show an increase in levy, and be honest with that, and that's not, and that's not accurate. There was an increase in spending, but the levy that was certified and collected is exactly the levy that was approved by the board last December. the levy that was approved by the board last December. The $9.236 million levy has not changed. The fact that spending was above what was anticipated is true. That is not the only time that's happened. The first month that I was here, we had to authorize $120,000 worth of expenditures for a camera system that wasn't planned for, that was, that came out of fund balance. The first year that I was involved with negotiating a contract, 2015, for the 2016, 2017 years, the contract was negotiated and there were expenses above what was budgeted because that's how we had done that before. Unbudgeted expenses are not that uncommon. Another comment made by Mr. Peters this morning that makes, that makes a lot of sense and I completely understand it is, is we have money, we have that additional PILT funding, and we could take some of that and cut down the $599,000 of additional levy requested this year. And we could, except that we know that next year, we're going to need, for the additional bond payments that we have, we're going to have an additional 120? 100 and, about $120,000 worth of additional debt service because next year is the first year we're going to have to pay the, or 2020 is the first year we're going to have to pay in principle on the bond that was issued this year. We have two and a half percent increase for staff and we have budgeted a 10% increase in, in health insurance. And if we don't account for those things, then what we do is we have unbudgeted expenses going forward. So we, we've been asked to plan and then when we plan, we're, our plans are questioned in that sense. But just in those three components, we show the need for an additional $500,000 in 2020 above what we have in 2019. If you look at statewide spending, our average spending increase has been less than 5% annually. Yes, it's increased significantly in the last couple of years, but on average, it's still around five, five and a half percent a year. Other people's funds, we, we keep hearing that state and federal payments are not keeping pace, but that's, that's not true. If you look at a history, state and federal payments have kept pace. The thing is, is they are much more directed and much more specific. We don't get as much unallocated money to use as we will. We get grants that are funding specific things. So we have options, you have options. We've presented to you the estimates of what the 2018 program is going to cost. And then our departments have, heads have, at your request, presented to you what they think they need to add in 2019. By far, that has been reduced significantly. The things that remain are the additional capital planning for building and projects. Most of the additional staff positions for 2019 have been reduced or eliminated. There are still some hours adjustments in there and there is still one part-time position to help at the community center and one full-time position to be phased in sometime later in 2019 to, to help in MIS, in information systems. Those are the program. The, the compensation is largely a calculation based off of the program. So if we want to have a conversation, again, we're, we need to go back to having a conversation about the program that we're, that we're offering. You do have the opportunity to use fund balance. We, it's, the fund balance that's sitting there, unallocated now, is the opportunity for us not to have to budget to add to our fund balance over the next two or three years. If we use it now, then we will probably need a bigger increase next year, unless we change the program. And if we don't use it now and we do find that we can use that money, then we can add that money to our fund balance to maintain our ratios that we need to without having to budget for levy to add to the fund balance. Eventually, if we want to maintain a fund balance at about 75%, we are going to have to budget for levy to add to the fund balance as, because, because expenditures will grow. They have grown, they will continue to grow. They're growing faster for everybody than they had for the past 20 years. And that's just the cost of doing business. They're, they're growing faster for us because we are at the end of the line and we're 100 miles away from another, from another center where we have the opportunity for some competition in, in how we purchase our items. So we've got the details that are in here. Really, nothing has changed. You, in the proposed budget and levy, you can see the adjustments that Brady has made to that summary sheet. You can still see the general fund details and the human services details and the highway And we take whatever, whatever questions that you have.
Madam Chair, I'll just answer the question regarding reserves. We don't have 2018 reserves calculated yet because it's a snapshot year end, but we have 2017. And so that, unreserved, unassigned general fund, 8.932623, so 8.9 million. And just to, this is back of the sheet by hand, that $761,000 PILT, the additional money that we don't know. We've already, we budgeted our standard amount regardless of that. We put, we budgeted about $235,000 for what I call the regular PILT under the statute, the first one. So that's already in our budget. Highway department budgeted a conserva, $125,000, just based on old conservative numbers. And so those two numbers are already in our budget. So subtracting those from the 761 leaves you 400 and something. And assuming, given us the least amount of available cash, it would be 42 and a half percent to the highway department under the secure rural schools. 42 and a half percent would go to the school. 8% would go to the RAC, the Resource Advisory Commission, we don't see that at all. And 7% would go to FireWise, et cetera. So 42 and a half percent, about $170,000, could go to the highway department. I'd, I'd like to use Excel just to prove that out. That was my hand.
Right, so that folks understand, the PILT money is divided up between all of us. We don't get all of it together. So FireWise and schools and highway
Yeah.
And all of that, it isn't just in our piggy bank.
No. And if it was a different kind of PILT, which I don't think it is, because there was word that secure rural schools was renewed without any detail, so I'm just assuming on that. But that gives us, that's the least amount that we would have for, for, let's say, budget relief for putting into the fund balance.
Okay. Okay, so continuing on and talking about our budget, Commissioner Duker?
So Arvis asked, when are we going to deal with our buildings? I ask that question at every other board meeting and I talked to Brian the other day and he almost has the list of all of our 17 buildings and their needs together. But we did add $100,000 to this budget for buildings, which we haven't done in the past. So there is money added to the budget and Brian is working very hard to get the list to us to get it done. So we are listening and we are trying, it's just, we're moving at the speed of government. So he did tell me on Sunday that he's heard me and he's getting it together. And then yesterday on the community health board, just as comparison, they approved their 2019 budget. Their entire staff is getting a 3% wage increase, except for one who's been there for 10 years and they don't have a longevity, so that one employee is getting 4% to compensate for being there for 10 years. So I also attended a four-hour training with DED with the state of Minnesota, and I did present this to you guys in the past, but just a reminder that right now in the state of Minnesota, there is 0.8 of a person available for every open job in the state.
There we go.
So being at 90%, I mean, we've had multiple jobs that have been open for years. And so it's a, it's a tough balance to figure out where to be and how do we compensate. And I don't think I'll ever forget my first union negotiation where one of the unions came in and brought all their facts and their data and set it down and said, well, you're a new commissioner, Heidi, so I think that you should know that 20% of our union qualifies for public assistance. We qualify for the heating program. We qualify for the housing program. We qualify for food assistance as county employees with the current wages. So that was a tough pill to swallow and we didn't give them much of an increase. And then I had an employee come up to me and tell me that their child who graduated from school in Cook County got a job locally and their child was making 50 cents less an hour than they were as a county employee and they'd been working for us for eight years. And they were working a second job to support their family, yet their child was able to go and get a job in Cook County. So, I mean, those are the tough conversations. During the union negotiations, I asked for the figures, I asked what the impact is, I asked how much it's going to be. My background, I went to college for accounting. Before I moved here to Cook County at the age of 23, I was the general manager of three multimillion dollar retail stores with 40 employees under me. So this kind of stuff keeps me awake at night. It makes me sick. It's not easy. It's the number part, it's the impact, it's where's the tipping point? Where is, what are we doing going to cause more harm than help? And it's the emotional point of it. So it's not an easy decision, it's not a slam dunk. The law enforcement union took most of the unions to mediation this year and we avoided those legal costs. So, you know, you, you face the legal costs on top of, when you come out of those mediations, they will most likely get more than we're offering. And so you will have the legal costs on top of the payroll cost. So it's not an easy thing to do.
As being part of the budget committee, we were always cognizant of the fact that for 2018, we would not hire anyone new. We would only replace. We did have a few retirees which needed to be replaced in different areas and that's part of our job. We need to keep public services going and in order to do that, we need the people to do the work. So we had proposed, as Jeff indicated, for 2019, one new part-time hire and then one that will take place later on in 2019. And that's all we did for hiring this year. Commissioner DeShaw?
Yes. Yes, I, I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Duker's, having served on the negotiation committee last year for staff. And I've been in business in Cook County for almost 40 years and, and I've had staff. But it, the staff of government is nothing like the staff of business. I have, the control, the checks and balances are way more complicated than they are in private business. Four unions sat in with all the contract negotiations and the union folks are highly educated, very well-trained, as well as our administrator, highly educated, very well-trained. And it takes that kind of skill to really pull off a fair and equitable deal. And when I say fair and equitable deal, I mean for the long term, not just for today. My role here as a county commissioner is to not be reactionary and just to respond and try to get the wages down in every negotiation. I'm looking out at least five years, when, in labor negotiations, you're looking for two to three years, because the cost of doing the negotiations costs money. And my primary concern is particularly in this climate, as I become more and more aware of our challenges going forward, retention and recruitment. We are at the end of the line. The recruiting of staff here is far more challenging than it is in any other county in the state. Far more challenging. And retention is the most cost-effective way to run a business of, with staff. And so that's what we looked at. That was our screening device in the union negotiations. And the union people bring that market education to the table. They know what the other counties are doing. We don't necessarily. So it's a, I guess my point is it's a very complicated process. I think we did a great job. We did a good, fair job for our staff. Without a educated and trained, really smart administrator, it would have been far more complicated, far, far worse. I don't, I think it would have cost us a lot more in the long run because we're not aware of those things as individuals serving as county board members. So the point I'm trying to make is the context that you bring to the table is far from the context that we have to deal with. So you may think it's easy or simple, but easy, simple things are actually really hard. I think we did a good job. And this budget reflects that and it will for some time. And the costs that we could be facing are, for instance, the, the continuing negotiation that could have happened like they did in every other county with these unions. And the cost of retention is, when staff leave, it's really, really, really expensive. So that's what I'm looking at when I'm, when I'm sitting at the table, making those decisions. I'm looking long-term. I'm not thinking, how can I save a dollar today and watch the $1,000 whipping by my ears? I have to, I have to juggle many, many screens, many balls in the air. That's my statement. I think this budget reflects that.
And I do have the 2019 survey of the other counties in Minnesota that show their increases. And there's, you know, a county with 17% debt service personnel costs, 10.32% payroll benefits, 7.5% payroll benefits and new public safety service center. So there are many, many counties that are looking at huge increases. 7.5% for law enforcement, human service salaries and benefits. 7.9% unfounded human service mandates and health insurance costs. I mean, almost every one of these is wages and wages. And so I have this, if anyone is interested in looking at it, we're, we're not alone.
I think one of the areas that seems to be coming up to the surface is, I have no experience working in the area of negotiations and all of that. So that's why we have a couple of board members who were involved in, in that whole process. And what I think has happened is that maybe during the course, and we'll not be doing this until 2020, right?
Yes.
Yes. Maybe during the course of that, we need to have a little feedback, a report to the board as how well that's going, because it comes before us, it's a done deal. And maybe we need to know how the process actually works with negotiations. So I'm just saying that I'm understanding your frustration out there too and the fact that it's, it's like, it's done, no more questions, move on. And maybe we need to be more respectful and open to that process. And so I'm just saying that we need to give that some constructive criticism or comments and make a note to self in 2020, when that negotiation starts again, that we, that we understand the process and, and understand what's going on. The same with our budget committee too. We met as a budget committee. We had five folks from each of the districts come to those. And we met and diligently looked at everything, but some of the board members felt that they were left out. They didn't know what was going on until the final thing. So we're going to improve on that too and be more involved with that because this is a lot of money. This is a lot of situations from all of you who are electing us to be observant of, of how we spend the money. So I think we're all open to looking at things a little bit differently and saying, how can we improve? And that's the best thing to say is be constructive, take responsibility and relook at things because things are changing so fast with what's required of us in the county. We look at different departments and, and they say, you know, we're moving, we're moving fast and we need help in this area and we need to know how to help them. So I think we've learned a lot about this process and hopefully with your concerns and comments and helping us talk about this, we can move forward on a different plane for, for the coming year. Any other comments, Commissioner?
There was, there's been comments in the past, there was a comment again today about the commissioners taking a cut in pay. The commissioners have not received an increase in base salary since the 90s. When I was elected, the commissioners paid $15 a month for health insurance. I asked for that to be 25. I asked for that to be 25, that was approved. The next year I asked for it to be 50, that was approved. The next year I asked for that to be 100, that was approved. Then I asked for a 20% contribution. In essence, every year since I've been elected, I have taken a cut in pay because that contribution comes out of my pocket to pay for that insurance. And I know that some people feel the commissioners couldn't have insurance. I had private insurance. I didn't feel that $15 a month was fair when the community was asking me to cut expenses and I had private insurance. And I received a letter from my private insurance that said, you are kicked off because the county offered insurance. And so I got kicked off of my insurance and I had to take the county insurance. So I have had to give up my work and my private business to cover my duties as commissioner. I have given up income and I have taken a cut in pay to do that. So I think that we have been responsible as commissioners and I think that's the part that people don't hear. I mean, for 2018, I have taken over a $4,000 cut in pay and my responsibilities of being a commissioner almost doubled with my duties. We get one per diem per day. So there are days I leave my house at 8:00 AM and I don't get home until 8:30 PM. So, and not all of the things that we do, do we receive per diem. We did not get per diem for the civility project. We did that all on our own time last night.
Commissioner Duchesne?
Yeah, I think going through truth and taxation for the second year, I agree with the people. You know, how can we sit here for an hour and hear you talking to us and we can't respond to you? That's wrong. It's your money we're spending, it's your money we're budgeting. Heidi said 40% of the things were qualified for assistance here?
20%.
20% were. Last year we had 17%. I think I, I can't remember who I talked to. I said, you know, this is going to break people. And what they told me, well, there's, there's services upstairs they can use. So it's good enough for the people, but it's not good enough for the employees. And Lloyd put these numbers together and I got a copy of them yesterday and they're quite staggering. I was shocked. A $29,000 raise. That's more than some people make in this county in a year. You know, the whole list there, whether it's 3%, 4% a year for a person that's been here for six years to get a $29,000 raise. You know, I've been talking to Brady here, kind of on and off through the whole meeting. And I'd like to make a motion to use, there's $170,000 available in the PILT and I'd like to use $103,000 of the general fund and set the levy at 2.9%.
Repeat the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to use, there's $170,000 available in the PILT and there's $103,000 in the general fund, out of the general fund, which comes to $273,000. It's $91,000 a point, I believe, this year. So that would set the levy at 2.9%.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
All second for discussion.
Okay.
Brady, does that work out?
Well, I think you'd have to choose without working through the numbers. If you said 2.99, these are estimates, but we'll bring it down to make it to 0.99, adjust the numbers. Either that or you go with those numbers and see where it falls.
So it's an either or?
I can't get this up, I can't tell you. I have to go back to my office.
These are numbers that I got from Brady and his shorthand, so. And there was approximately $170,000 available in the PILT.
And I'm not comfortable pulling out of the general and I know that when we set the levy and make it work, that's when we get into trouble.
And there's $8.9 million in the general fund.
Are statutory requirements of what we have in reserves?
Commissioner Duchesne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't believe that that, that this motion accomplishes anything. It doesn't lessen expenses, it just, again, uses savings to balance the budget. And I feel like we, as a board, have worked too hard for too many years to, A, balance the budget, which is a huge accomplishment, particularly in this climate, but, but we were able to do that because the economic climate is good. And we made that decision because the economic climate is, has almost recovered from the 2008 recession. So to be, I'm trying to avoid being reactionary. That's what we've been in the past. I, I want to stand for long-term fiscal responsibility, capital funding. We have that tool now, we've made huge strides toward becoming fiscally responsible for the long-term. When Administrator Cadwell gave us that, that statement about had we been, had we had a plan 25 years ago and raised our levy relative to cost of living increases, et cetera, about 4.5% for the past 25 years, we would have the same levy, we would be spending the same now, but we would have 17 or 25 million?
29.
29 million more in the bank. So for us to just respond to, to people who don't agree with me in my, in what I believe to mean my duty and my responsibility as a county commissioner, I, I can't, I can't abide by that.
Commissioner DuKirk?
I mean, we could take $100,000 off the building projects again and put all our buildings on hold for another year. I mean, that's irresponsible, but I mean, that's an option rather than taking from what we don't know. Sorry, I'm not up by the microphone. So there's, you know, different things to cut and take back on. But just a reminder, if we had been at 19.1 last year, we would be lower this year and that's my fear, like Janice said, if we go down to three, it's back at it next year to straighten it out still. And we promised the citizens that we would straighten it out and I, I just feel like we're kicking it down the road again.
Commissioner Duchesne?
I know we have the long-range Ellers Plan and that truth and taxation, I think Tom Crosby laid it out pretty well. You know, it, sure, it's a great plan, but can the people of Cook County afford it? Maybe some can, but a lot of them can't. I think Tom just said this morning, he got 2.8% raise on his social security this year. Tom, Tom. You know, what about, we have an aging population here, which we know. Our taxes are getting so high that we're running all the young people out of here they can't afford to live. And I did talk to some of my peers at AMC about the Ellers Plan. Sure, it's a great plan, but does it work for Cook County in the long range? You know, you're face, you're looking at 10 years, 12 years, that's 6% a year? That's 60%. Who can afford that?
Any other comments or questions?
No, let's just, well, yeah, I have a question. I guess I hate to put you on the spot, Brady, but I know that when we looked at the preliminary levy, and Jeff, you could maybe answer this too, the 599%. I think we used hypothetically $150,000 home, what that increase would be in a 300. And I know, but I do remember something like $25 a year.
5.99% increase on a homestead is $27 per $100,000 worth of value and 37 on a seasonal recreational property.
Per year, okay. So we're talking about, repeat that again, a non?
For a homestead, for a homestead property, it was calculated to be $27 per $100,000 worth of value, is that correct?
Yeah. And 47 for $150,000.
So that'd be $47. That's on the preliminary levy.
So the median home price would be $55.
So the 2.9% would be approximately a half of that? Would that be fair to assume? So then that would be half a $27 increase a year and a half of 47 for the 150? So that would be an increase of about $23.50 per the year. And on the other $100,000, 150, it'd be, excuse me, $13, $13 a year. And the other one would be 23. So that would be the increase on those properties.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other comment that I would make is in, in that truth and taxation packet, all of those statistics were laid out pretty clearly about how we fit in the grand scheme of things with other counties in Minnesota. So the people that are claiming to be taxed out of Cook County, where are they going? If our tax rate is not the highest, in fact, we were close to, I can't remember the statistics, but we're, we're not out of line with the rest of the state of Minnesota.
Our average median tax rate is about just below the midpoint.
The dilemma is our, our houses are valued at, at a higher rate, which is something we really can't control. So I think, I mean, that's a sort of a real dilemma. But they, you know, we say this, but I realize that we're a proud community and nobody wants to do this. Although if your taxes are done by an accountant, the accountant will do this for you, is get the, if you really can't, if your income is below a certain point, the state will, well, I don't know if that's, yeah, there are tax credits. So that person who really can't afford their taxes, there are safety nets. But I, but again, I realize we're, you know, those people of Cook County, hardworking people, probably don't want to do that. So I get, I get the dilemma, get the dilemma. But because our taxes were so low starting in 2008 and I, I know why commissioners wouldn't raise them, it would have been inappropriate. We were in a recession in 2008. So it's 2018, we're out of the recession now. It's time to catch up. It's time to pay the bill. We've been spending down fund balance for the past 10 years. So a lot of this last three years reflects that, trying to catch up and own what our actual expenses are.
Any further comments, questions?
You talk about the fund balance. In 2016, there was $7.5 million and in 2017, there was $8.9 million, a million and a half dollars more. And you're worried about taking $103,000 out of it or somewhere around there.
Madam Chair, there's, 2015, 2016, there was an issue and delayed payments and so looking at those two years of fund balance without looking at them across the period of time is a little misleading.
Yeah, you, you do have to look at cross-time plus this includes things such as valuation of investments as of December 31st of each year. So sometimes you get swings due to that. So you, you have to look at it broadly in order to, to make sense of it, year-to-year wide swings, sometimes, not always. And it's really, our needs are based on the percentage of expenditures. Looking at 10 years ago, for example, we had 6.2 million, we were at 71% of our expenses at that time. And now we're at 8.9, but it's down to 58% of our expenditures, so. So the relativity, even though it's grown, is less. We're, we used to be at over 100% back in the mid 90s, so just perspective.
And years ago, the board said it went go below 75%.
Yeah, and that's, there's no easy way to even say the 75% because that first came up with the rating agencies and they changed their, what they look at every time they rate you. So we're, we're trying to find their number, but it's not, it's not a simple thing. So that's kind of a, that's a, kind of a goal and a target, but there's no one-year number snapshot that tells you you hit their mark or not. We're just staying close.
The reason we're hitting that mark is to get the low bond rating.
Right. And it's saved us a lot of money.
Yes.
Well, there's, Madam Chair, there's another reason to have a good percentage, 42% is cash flow. Having a, having a 42% fund balance is cash flow from January 1st till we start collecting tax payments. There's, there's some reason why we, there's, there's a basic safety net. There's a reason why some cities and counties are on the verge of bankruptcy because they're borrowing money to cash flow until they collect taxes and.
Yeah, and if, a lot of schools, that's what they're doing, they're bonding pretty much every year for cash flow. It's not a, it's not a good way to operate.
Any further comments or questions? And I lost track of the motions. Before we take a vote on that, could you please read the motion?
Motion is to use $103,000 of the general fund, $170,000 in the PILT monies for a 2.9% levy increase.
So either you should refine that to, to get to something close to 2.9 or to use the pilot and fund balance, whatever's needed to get to 2.99. One of those two will work, but.
You have to pick one.
Either using those two numbers or the percentage.
Use the percentage.
2.9 or 2.99?
2.99.
2.9, he's amending his motion to 2.99.
2.99.
And I support that amendment. So that's the motion.
We all understand. Okay? I would ask for all those in favor?
Right.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We will continue on. Any other parts of our budget comments? We're done with that?
What was the vote? I didn't quite get that.
Four to one.
Against.
We're moving on to reviewing the commissioner assignments, unless there's anything else. Sorry.
Okay. Well, I respect Commissioner Duchesne's efforts to lower the levy.
I do too.
I served on the budget committee and we listened to various views and we didn't all agree, but I think Commissioner Storley and I came away from that, trying to be open. I know myself, we looked at service delivery and sometimes providing for service deliveries. I would just use as an example only, veteran's service officer. I think we've listened for two years to see if this is really needed and it was time to make a decision. And for me, I think it's very important to make sure that we have all our veterans covered if they need help because it certainly could keep them from going down farther if they need services. And there's a lot of research on that. If you go on and, and look at interventions and helping people before they go over the cliff, so to speak. And so that's an example that I think is very important sometimes to provide. One person may say, well, I don't need it therefore they don't. Well, we as commissioners don't look at it that way. I know just a week ago, for all of the commissioners, there was an article on this in the front page of NACO, that's the National Association of County Organizations, and had an article on providing services for veteran's officers, especially in remote areas. And the state does provide some of these positions throughout the country, but they're finding out that there's a greater need than what can be. finding out that there is a greater need than what can be done. So, sometimes county governments have to step up and say, you know, "This is something worthwhile." I think I was maybe accused of being emotional, but I'd like to clarify that, that I think it's compassionate in our approach to making sure that we help our veterans. And it's not an opinion. There's a lot of research saying that that's a good investment, not only for their lives, but for veterans of the community. So, I think that's one area there. The other area of technology where we added staff is, this is just a continued more and more kind of way of delivering services and supporting our people by keeping our costs down. And technology, I've seen it, works that way. So, by adding this technology position in the third quarter, will hopefully, down the line, save us money. I know that's hard to understand, but that's the way it works. It's called investing in your future. I also have had some experience with financial planning in public sector, and looking at the ALER's plan, I think it's good, and I commend Commissioner Cadwell for really working with them and projecting this into our county. I think it's going to have benefit in the long run. And yes, I know it's not popular, but sometimes you just got to step up and say what you think is best for the long term. And unfortunately, I ran also on a platform of financial planning, long-range planning. And so, I think with that, that's my rationale, I would like to make a motion to increase the levy for 2019 to 5.99%, which comes to $9,792,111.
Do I hear a second? A second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
You have to call for votes opposed.
Oh, yes, and those opposed, sorry. We have two opposed. Okay.
Madam Chair, can we take a five-minute break? I know it's the second one today, but we have committee assignments and auditor/treasurer.
And employee concerns? Like, five-minute break?
Yep.
Okay, then we'll do a five-minute break. Come back at 11:05.
You got a copy. Read and, let's see. Turning page, 51. That starts to give you the detail.
Well, I would say, my name is actually page 31. And I don't think it's-
Budget, budget, I think so.
I don't know. If you don't understand, I would, but I think it's important to get here. Dollars and dollars, dollars. But I would-
Oh, I heard of me. They knew why they wouldn't want, why they wouldn't change now, because the deadline is ending the budget, these were the right ones. And so, the S is down. Do something that brings it down to like 2.9, because the guy suggested.
It's gone. Not satisfying. Yeah.
I need the L or two.
I was just thinking about that this morning. Should probably get it ordered. I was thinking I wouldn't do it, but I think I have to do it.
Write notes.
Yes, 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 yes. I feel very satisfying, but-
Okay, we'll reconvene.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that extra break. Yeah, it's necessary.
We're going to move on, then, to review commissioner assignments. We will have a new commissioner starting in January, and we have been, excuse me. Excuse me. We're moving on to commissioner assignments, just to review. We adopt these in January at our first meeting, but we have been looking all of our different assignments over, and sometimes we're swapping different areas because they fit better with our district or whatever. And then, in January, we will welcome a new commissioner. And he has been in on this also in terms of looking over his assignments from his district. And there's no reason why we can't swap around and look at different things, subtract, add, whatever, because we do have a lot of assignments. We have assignments that involve local committees and boards, and assignments that take us out of the county to other meetings and boards also. So, are there any questions about looking over our particular district and looking at, and just any questions about that? We aren't going to discern anything right now.
On Jan's district, I'm on the North County Management.
Yes, you are.
I took that for hers.
Yeah, a lot of people took some of mine.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could, Commissioner Burschine has marked up his copy and submitted it to me so that I can send you a clean copy ahead of the January 8th meeting. So, if you're all aware of any changes or want to do any trading in between, please give me a summary of any comments that you have, so I'll include those on the agenda for January 8th for our organizational meeting. If you've got questions about them, feel free to discuss them now, but if everybody would just, this, this list is actually the list that's published on the website. And I know it's not up to date. I know it's last January's list, and I know things have changed since then. So, given the fact that I don't have Julie, and I'm going to have to do this, I appreciate changes in a format like this so that we are closer to accurate when we get to January.
Okay.
Madam Chair, thank you. Yeah, if I could just comment, I've only been involved in two years, but I think it was helpful for me, and I hope it's helpful for you, and therefore helpful to all of us, to go through this list, and I know Commissioner Duchesne mentioned one thing. This list seems to have changed in various formats. So, if he wants to send it out, that's fine, but I did make copies for today. But I've just included in red those assignments that seem to have been added over, and then I've made comments on any of the changes that have been taken by board action or by my assignment, and I think I actually missed one. I've got 40-some on here, but, for example, if I, if it was listed as Arrowhead County's Association, and there was nothing behind it, I added alternate, which means that I no, I was not the primary, I was an alternate. There's another one that's saying, "Not in two years," that just means we haven't met for two years. And so, I'm sure there's other ways of doing it, but that's how I sifted through it and just made those additions. And then, hopefully, we can distribute them and look in, you know, what we can do to maybe improve. And I think it was mentioned previously, too, that maybe some, this may have some effect on, for Deems, I'm finding that when you travel out of the county, you spend a lot of time. And other days, sometimes we have five, I've had five or six. I think one day I had seven meetings. And I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that those are the ranges of, you know, some of us have a lot more than others. Also, just food for thought next year, and I'll just use myself as an example again. I serve on N-Club Laurentian Resource Conservation. I'm on, also on the Environmental and Natural Resources for AMC. And so, some of these are related to that. I'm in the soil and water, I'm not on the soil and water, but I'm on water management. I'm not on invasive species. I'm on one watershed, one plan. I'm not on forest collaboration, but I'm on the Forest Service Quarterly with the DNR as well. So, maybe at some point in time, we can consider, like, our AMC assignments, how would clusters of these fit under that? In other words, using environmental and natural resources, the local assignments and the regional assignments would be somewhat related to that topic. In other words, you become far more familiar with those dynamics. But they're only suggestions. I'm not making any formal recommendation, just expressing my thoughts.
Commissioner Dukirk.
I did the same thing as Myron. There are things that associate with each other, and the Soil and Water Board actually did ask if I would take the one watershed because of my experience on soil and water. I have feelings on both sides of that. I have the feeling that you have the expertise because you're on it, but then, how does the rest of the board get the expertise? So, I'm with you on that of putting things together, but also having all commissioners have a little bit. And I know in my years as commissioner, by being on multiple groups, we've been able to get funding to other groups, because I've gone to one meeting, and they have a source of funding, and I go to the other meeting and let them know that there's the source available, and that's how it all connects. So, I'm with you, Myron, and I need to lighten my load of meetings. You know, we help each other out as commissioners, and we take on responsibilities for each other to be helpful, and we've eliminated a lot of committees since I started because they're just not meeting anymore, but I'm not carrying everybody else's load next year.
Well, Commissioner Dukirk, with that in mind, you're on the Extension Committee?
I am.
Heidi?
Yeah.
Jan is?
I was.
You were.
M.
M.
With Myron.
Okay. I have been asked by AMC to join the AMC Extension Committee, and that requires no obligation in money from the board. It's a little bit of travel for me, and they usually conduct those meetings when we have AMC, or we get together during the year. There's one meeting that I would be going to separate, and that would be joining the extension with the four H's down at the State Fair, other than that. And there would be a few phonins and that type of thing, so I would-
You want an extension?
I would ask to be on the extension, yes.
You're going to have to fight Dave for that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that, too.
Anything else, any questions about?
I'm good with mine.
Well, okay. We're all good with this?
Well, Madam Chair, I think that, I, you know, I think that we need to somehow or the other have some communications with our new commissioner as well.
I believe you have.
And I've talked informally, and at his request, it's a little mutual, and I know he's willing to help. I, too, would, would really help me, I found out, if I could just get rid of the few that are long-travel ones, because they're long, long days, and I sort of picked some of those up, but not by choice.
So, should we have a conversation about that before that sets it up, or, because there's-
Madam Chair, again, I think if everybody just submitted comments, corrections, additions, updates, anything like that to me sometime before the end of next week, then I can summarize that information and get it back all out to you, and you can, you can work on it up until January 8th, when you'll have to approve the organizational.
Okay, well, so, we can do that, go over each of our assignments, and I feel that good additions and corrections are appropriate, starting off the new year. And I believe that in most situations, the public understands that we represent them in one area or the other, and we do not take this frivolously to just say we're going to spend some money just because we like to go to a meeting. There's a lot of meetings involved, so by giving it all-
I don't think I ever said I like to go to meetings.
Giving it all to the administrator, then he can sort this out, and we can have additions or corrections, and then with the new board member joining us in January, we still may have to look things over again, but I think we'll have a good feel for our commitments and things that we feel are not an obligation or something that is worthwhile, because these meetings, I really can't think of any meeting that's not worthwhile. The fact is, though, that we live at the end of the road, and we have travel. And we can try to do Skyping, we can try to do some things, you know, meeting in our ATV room, but most things, we need to be at the table, because if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And then, you can have anybody decide for you, and that's not fair either. So, we need to do our own decision-making, so. Anything else on this?
I was on a video meeting yesterday, and it went down twice during the meeting. They had construction on their end, and then we had a blip on our end, and so.
Yeah. Okay.
Who's on air, DC?
I am. Yeah. And that needs to be renewed every so often, too. Okay. Is there anything else? We'll move on. So, now we move into publication of dispersments.
Madam Chair, yeah, there's a statute, 37512, that will allow the county to publish- Madam Chair, yeah, there's a statute, 37512, that will allow the county to publish an accumulation of warrants that are $2,000 or less, rather than listing each individual item. So when we publish our minutes, they'd be much shorter. So that's an option, and we haven't figured out how to do that yet. But if we did do that, we would still publish on the website the full list, of course. So if you'd like to pursue this lower-cost publication, we'd like some authority to go forward with that.
Okay, I'll open it up for comments or questions. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It makes sense. It makes sense to me. I think there have been, in the past several years, many improvements made to meetings, consent agendas, et cetera, and it seems like it follows suit to make meetings more flow better. And the information is still available in another place, so it's not like they were tucking the information away somewhere. It's available, it just doesn't have to be in every spot.
Commissioner Burscham?
I think it's a good idea.
So Brady, this is to save us on our fees for publishing?
It would. It would reduce the length, the column inches.
Makes sense.
Madam Chair, if I may, the bill to publish our warrant list is $1,100 every time we do it, and the majority of the items of the listings are the ones that would qualify for this, so we would summarize that and shorten it up significantly. We could even put in the...
Yeah, our minutes are in the newspaper, and so these are all listed there.
So we could summarize that and make the full list available on the website.
Yeah, I see some of them in there for $2 and $3.
Okay, no further discussion, and I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we approve this resolution.
Support. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Those opposed?
The second item, commissioners, you're actually required to set your salary and per diems prior to the new year, and so this would be the opportunity to change those. Otherwise, as you can see here, the base salary is listed for the four commissioners, with an addition of $1,500 for the board chair, and then the $100 per diem per meeting as detailed in the per diem policy. So I'd ask for a motion of either to change any of these or to renew as shown.
So we'll open this up for comments, questions. Commissioner Deschaux?
I have no comments. I'd make a motion to support this.
Commissioner DuKirk?
We made a motion, so we stopped the conversation.
Good. Let's keep rolling there. I gotta go to where?
Well, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second amendment? Motion failed? Okay, so...
This should have been a discussion way back in June, and I'm okay with accepting it the way it is, but I hope that next year we have a discussion. The responsibility of the vice chair is very much similar to the responsibility of the chair, and so I would like to see a $500 a year increase for the vice chair because of the amount of work, the additional work that they take on. The chair does have signing authority and responsibility and has to do a lot of running in and out to sign documents, so, you know, I think it's fair where that's at, but I know that being a vice chair and working with the vice chairs, the added burden of that responsibility. I don't think $500 is enough, but I would like that as a consideration, and that's fine if it's part of the 2020 budget.
Comment?
Skip right over the vice chair.
Yeah, as vice chair, what I did, and I don't know what the answer is to it, but I think I made one claim, because I had to stay in town rather than make another commitment. But I usually have other meetings on Mondays, so it doesn't make any difference when we meet, but typically meet two or three times a month on Mondays. And I just put it down under an extra assignment. But I'm not opposed to what you're suggesting either, but it is time, but, you know, for, I think this past year, I've had other meetings on that day anyways, so it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference. I think once in the last year. It had to change my plans, my personal plans, but I think that we need to address this in next year, and we have a lot of, you know, maybe there's no way to solve some of the inequities or responsibilities, but I think we should have a discussion about it. I know that some public people would think that we shouldn't get paid anything, and we should be, you know, sacrificing our own expenses maybe to do this, but that's not how things work effectively. So I'm somewhat of a, I'm prone to problem-solving, and sometimes you can't solve problems, so I understand that as well, but I think we need to study it, form some kind of study committee, maybe have some discussions on it. We need to look at the future as well. I would assume that if someone's been on a county commissioner for even longer than Commissioner DuKirk, they may be working for 25, 30% less than you would have been, you know, in 2009. When was it, 1990-something, the last increase?
Eighty-eight.
Yeah, ninety-something. I don't remember.
So cost of living has gone up significantly. But we should be doing this as public service.
You've calculated your hourly with your travel and...
Yeah, I think I published that, and, you know, but I didn't do this for money.
I calculated mine as my last paycheck, and it's $7.34 an hour.
Yeah, some days I make about $5 an hour. I'm sorry, what?
He was making a joke, sorry.
Said before tax or after?
Yeah. But it is public service, but I think we need to look at it and be rational about it and look to the future.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree with Commissioner DuKirk that the vice chair should receive $500. And I also, because some people serve on so many committees and others don't serve on very many, to make it more equitable, I would be in favor of increasing the per meeting, the per diem, not increasing the per diem, but increasing it per, so that if you have two meetings on a day, that you would get the same amount for each meeting. And the reason behind that being, when you're on a committee, it's not just going to the meeting, it's really carrying the burden of the work for that organization, and the person who goes to, who has the most committees may, in order to fit them all in, to five days a week, you're doing two on probably several days, and that's a way greater burden, and it seems like it should be compensated, in my opinion, to be fair. And I believe that that's a way to make that compensation more like a user fee kind of thing, so that it directly relates to work being done, rather than messing with the salary at this point. I think that's a... Anyway, shut up.
Madam Chair, I wouldn't be supportive of a per meeting, because he has seven in one day and I have five in one day, but I would be considerate of a maximum of two a day, which wouldn't be a huge burden on the budget.
I had no idea you had five in one day and seven in one day.
I had seven one day, yeah. I counted.
Yep.
Wow. Because that also carries the... That's fine with me, but it also carries the burden of you're doing seven committees and just because they all meet on the same day. But two per day is probably as much as you can...
But to qualify, I have to be honest and say that five of them were county-related and two others were things I volunteered to be on in the community.
Okay, well, that doesn't count.
Five of them do.
Because, yeah, if we just count meetings, I could do several a day, but that's the issue.
So it's not uncommon to do five a day?
So what I'm hearing is that there is a recommendation that the vice chair, starting next year, receive $500.
Additional.
Additional.
Don't cut their pay down to 500.
No. And then per diem would be $100 per meeting for two meetings.
Maximum of two meetings a day.
Maximum of one day. So that is going to be the motion. Okay, so I need somebody to...
I would make that motion.
Make that motion. Okay. Any further questions or comments on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just be quick. The reason, a lot of our work in the past, since I've been a commissioner in the past four years, has been around creating some less reactionary, more professional organization to the work that we do. And I, so both of these things that I've recommended feel like they support being a more professional organization, because the work that we do is professional. Thank you.
And there are days when we do have two, three, and four meetings, as we have said.
Well, Myron will have a meeting in the morning and then have to be in Virginia. Thanks for taking that, Lloyd.
Okay, so we have...
Had his hand up.
Commissioner Deschaux?
I don't, you know, there's a lot of committees and meetings on here, but I don't know how you can effectively do your job going to 40 different meetings a month and process all that came in, make a decision on it. That's a lot of information.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
As we know, when we go to state meetings, all 87 counties are together meeting and having contributions for what's going on.
And five meetings all at one time.
Five meetings there, too, right. Okay, so you hear the motion? I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we need, we've added the loan fund. Brady asked for the loan fund to be added to our agenda.
Madam Chair, this was, the committee met yesterday. Myron was there at the start, Molly was there at the start. So this is a request for Jay LaFavor. The motion would be to approve a 15-year, $25,000 revolving loan to Jay LaFavor for purchase of equipment and working capital. Condition open three actions is required by the RLF committee with collateral consisting of business vehicles, inventory, tools, accounts receivable, and subject to execution of a loan agreement, security agreement, promissory note, and UCC filing in authorizing the board chair and auditor treasurer to sign such agreements. The three actions that the committee required was that LaFavor get a written agreement by the supplier to forgive all past interest charges on an account, and we turn to using a new main supplier, and three, upgrading their accounting system and current financial statements. Our loan policy, some background here, is not to fund, generally is not to fund working capital. However, we have provided some working capital in the past sparingly. In this instance, the committee felt supplying some working capital is justified due to an equipment fire loss that was substantially not covered by insurance and affecting his ability to continue the service, which he's been in service for many years and appears to be on the way to being very successful. So that precipitated the cash flow problem. And so that's the question.
So we have a request for working capital.
And equipment.
And equipment.
Equipment.
I'm taking notes here. You don't have a handout on that, do you? It's a lot. Could pass it down.
Twenty-five thousand.
Okay, we'll pass it down.
Twenty-five thousand for 20 years?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years, okay.
Brady, was that recommendation approved by the revolving loan fund committee?
It was unanimously approved.
Okay. We'll open it up for discussion. Commissioner Burscham?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I had to leave early for another meeting, but I stuck in there long enough to hear all the detail, and I think the group really worked to a good solution. And this was complicated, and I was, quite frankly, I'll be honest, going into it, I was not that much in favor of it because of just all these things. But I do understand now that there was a real need for that, and I think it's going to help the county as well as this individual in providing these important services. So I would just like to add that, that I support it.
Oh, can I? I should not pass that around.
The only thing that I have a problem with that is there's two vehicles he's trying to put up for collateral on there, and I think the newest one's already 12 years old, and the other one's a lot older. And 15 years for $25,000 seems like an awful long time.
Most of our $25,000 have been for 20 years, but that's if it's real estate. If it's equipment, then it's 15 years as the maximum, so. So that's typical. We have very few that are less than 15 years. There've been a few very small loans that have said they could pay it back in five or 10, and they wish to do that, but no, that's typical. It keeps the payment down manageable.
I agree with Commissioner Deschaux on the extent the age of the collateral will have no value towards the end of the loan, so we have a situation like that. My other concern is that one of our requirements be that he has insurance to cover the collateral, not, I hope to God he has no other catastrophe happen in his life, but when you said part of this situation is the insurance didn't cover replacement, I hope that the insurance will cover what we're...
It was a, yeah, it was a technicality, which I don't know if I should go into here, but everybody in the committee well-understood it, that it was a very unusual situation.
But I hope that it's covered now.
So they had insurance. It was a technicality that prevented it from covering.
Those insurance agents.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, again, confused by the criteria for the revolving loan fund. So what's the basic criteria for the revolving loan fund?
Give me some, there's lots of criteria.
Like, because I don't want to feel like, I don't want to be put in this position of creating the criteria in my own mind each time a loan application comes in. For instance, I want for there to be a uniform criteria that these loans are approved on. So for instance, this one has collateral. Some of the other loans that we've approved or not approved had no collateral. This one doesn't have any employees. Other loans have been not approved because they didn't have employees. So I'm just confused... So I, I'm just confused about what is the criteria of the revolving loan fund so that I don't have to feel responsible to make it up in my brain.
Well, we should provide you with the guidelines that the board has approved. So there's state, there's state law that governs it all, and this is not violating state law. Our guidelines are tougher than state law. They were set up prior to my being here.
Right.
There've been some changes added, but...
And I do, I don't want to disrespect it. I very much appreciate it because I think it's a valuable part of our community.
This is a precedent change. We have provided some working capital in the past, not for a loan this large, but sometimes it's, it's a technicality to say you're not providing working capital because they have many sources of funds. And we say, well, our funding is not the working capital part, yours is. But there's no way to completely separate that, except by, only what you're getting is the collateral.
Got it. Because it's for the capital fund.
Yeah, it covers it.
Because it's for equipment.
Right.
That's why there's collateral.
And the committee often wants them to have more working capital than they're even asking for because they want them to be successful and not come back again or not be able to pay the loan. So some of them are too hard on themselves and don't ask for enough. Not in this case, it wasn't that, but just to give you some background.
Yep, no, it's really helpful.
The basic criteria is job creation or retention.
Right.
In this, in this case, it's most likely retention, although he thinks he was on track to add like a half person. So this would allow him to continue on that track, which he thought he was going to go to, but with the accident, it could be a long time coming.
So that criteria was part of what they considered.
Yeah, we always, that's the number...
Being unanimous and voting for us.
It's really the number one criteria. It's not to, you know, refinance somebody's loan to make it easier for them, things like that. It's somebody who's looking to either, I mean, the ideal is somebody who's creating a few jobs with a small business. But if you can help somebody stay in business, that's the other criteria, and that's probably more likely this one, or at least stay on the same track.
Got it. Okay, thanks, that helps.
So he's been in business for about 20 years. He has a substantial equity into it. So any other comments or questions in regards to this? And it would be for 15 years to add the equipment for the working capital and...
Yeah, and the committee recognized the vehicles, which is why they included everything, including receivable, the tools, the tools that'll be purchased with part of the funding, and the receivables that are on the books, et cetera, so, and the personal guarantee. So we basically took everything that was there, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt this or pass a resolution to accept this loan.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second it, just for the sake of more discussion.
So more discussion, questions?
So I have one more question that, so unanimous meant, was everybody on the committee at the meeting where it was unanimous?
Pretty much.
I left early for another meeting, but I did commit to the committee my support for the decision they made because I think I knew enough information at that time to say I could support whatever the committee was going to.
Thank you.
It was pretty close to resolution.
And at that time, everyone was there. Molly does not vote, as she provides legal counsel, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else? So I have a motion and a second to approve this loan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. It passed. So hopefully he will...
You hear a yes?
Yes. Three yes, two no. So hopefully he will have the wherewithal now to go ahead and work on his business and keep going another 20 years. Okay, let's see. We're going to move on to employee concerns and commission reports. So commission reports. Anything having to do with anything that you would like to report? Commissioner DuKirk?
So there's Duluth Days at the Capitol in February, and the Chamber in Visoka County and the EDA have gone in the past.
The Duluth Days?
Duluth Days at the Capitol, which means the Duluth-St. Louis County Board goes. And so this invite has come to me through the EDA, and it's Duluth Days, not Cook County Days. So I had asked Mary, and I talked to her again this morning about, you know, are we invited to this? And, you know, she's like, well, yes, you're invited. So my futures committee meets on Thursday and Friday that week. This will be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday morning of that week. I just wanted to put out there for consideration, and we'll have to pass it on to Dave Mills. The hotel rooms will probably book up before January, but it is Tuesday night with Bach and Eklund, which we have a very good relationship. Then all day Wednesday is meeting with legislators across the state to talk about our needs here. So I don't know if this is something we should be doing, if it's beneficial to us or not. I just wanted to throw it out to all of you and let you know that you are invited if you're interested in going to this, and just something to think about and maybe ask them to change the name to Cook County, Lake County, and Duluth Days.
Or North Shore Days or something.
North Shore Days, yes. So...
That's on February, what you said?
February 19th, 20th, and 21st.
That's after our legislative meeting, the first part of February.
The week before that.
This is the week after?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's give that some thought.
Yep, I just wanted to let you know you're all invited.
Okay. Okay. Anything, yes?
Madam Chair, are you, I guess I just want to ask that if you're planning on going and you are involved in EDA, would you consider representing the county more officially with a per diem in expenses?
I wasn't going to ask for per diem in expenses. I will probably get some pushback from my family for investing more of my free time, but I feel it's important. I think it'll be beneficial. I don't know if it'll be beneficial till I go, but yes, I would consider going to represent us as a board if you will put together some of your stuff for me to bring, and I'm not sure about hotel, and I can stay with my kids and cover it. And AMC covers my hotel for future, so they'll cover part of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can definitely see the value in it for Cook County. We're, you know, anybody who visits here has to go through Duluth, and neither but they're a neighboring, I mean, we are all, I always say that it's one big neighborhood. We're at the east end of the North Shore, and Duluth is at the west end of the North Shore. And the more that we can do to hear the other voices on the North Shore, the better educated and better decision-making we can have, and more collaborative work can happen and spawn out of things like that, particularly with our legislators and so forth. So I think it's a really good opportunity to combine efforts and to hear what's going on. I think I would advocate for making it...
And I would do like Ginny did for Naco and bring back a report.
Okay, well, let's give this some thought after the first of the year and see where we are with all of that. Anything else for commissioner reports?
Do we want to talk about AMC?
Mm-hmm, sure. AMC. Commissioner Deshaun, what'd you think?
I'm on the Indian Affairs Committee, and all of you attended that, and I think we actually had a pretty good conversation in that, you know, they were, I think I was able to educate them a little bit.
Good.
And I think we're going to be moving in the right direction now, hopefully, so...
Tim does want you to be the chair.
No.
I appreciated your voice, Commissioner Deshaun, in that, in that meeting. I really appreciated your voice. It was a good conversation because you were there. Thank you.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Yes, lots of the discussion was about housing, and I think our new elect is going to be a huge asset on that end for us as a representative. He's very inquisitive and had a lot of input and has a lot of ideas, and so that'll be really good to have him on and looking into that. And so, yes, in some situations, we are ahead of the curve, and in some situations, we have a lot of work to do. So it's a lot of meetings, and I was a little frustrated in the meetings because we didn't have time for discussion. We sat and listened for a lot of it, and so a lot of questions didn't get answered, but we can follow up with presenters and whatnot. And as always, I like the HR meetings where you learn what not to do and say. But it's very good.
Commissioner Bushen?
Yes, I think I attended some meetings in the housing, excuse me, getting late in the day. Oh, no, warning. I thought the housing one was interesting, and we're sort of on course there, which is, but we have challenges, and I think the challenge we have is we're quite small. We're a very small county, and in our assets and so forth, and we're really limited in some of the things to do. So we need to cooperate a lot and collaborate with nonprofits and the private sector. Natural resources, it seemed like it was the same, same agenda items that we had before, but our conversations are a lot about ditches and farm country issues, and so it's frustrating a little bit, but we're the fish out of water because we're pretty unique here. But a lot of the discussion is predominantly about ditches and wetlands and so forth, and they're important, but not a whole lot pertaining to here, except pilt. And pilt was discussed, and I think we're getting more and more support from other commissioners that we need to support pilt payments to those counties such as us and others that have a lot of public lands. And so I think we're making some progress in that, and that is on the agenda for our legislative session, so it's, but here again, you can't take away from the other counties and get their support, so we have to have some kind of, you know, say, fail kind of system of how to, how to adjust those things. But I think there's ways to work it out.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I, my idea, the value of the Association of Minnesota Counties and bringing such excellent informational sessions to the table is invaluable as a commissioner, and I really appreciated attending those and especially the housing one, which was excellent, and then realizing that in our community that we, you know, the recipe that she introduced was like, well, that's the, that's what we did. And so reinforced, reinforced the work that we've done, and it's not, certainly not over, but it also is so valuable to socialize with other commissioners, the commissioners from St. Louis County, the commissioners from Lake County, the commissioners from Koochichin, the commissioners, you know, the ones that are regionally similar, but also the ones that are regionally different, and to share our, share our concerns. And I don't get the feeling in that sharing that there's that competitive flavor at all that if you get what you want, I won't get what I want. I just sense that people are really there, willing to work together and listen, and it's a good, I never knew how, I never knew the quality of the politicians in this state. And the people that are there representing counties from all over the state are, the one thing that stands out in my mind is they care very deeply for their communities, and they are there working their buns off to, for their goals, and they're accomplishing things, and they're, but they're really kind of humble people. They're not the politicians that you see out there on the national level at all. They're really there to learn, share, grow, and work together, collaborate to get our goals met. So it's a great group of people. I, I didn't expect that. Was, that'll be one of the things that I'll miss, and, but I appreciate knowing that. That's been a kind of lovely thing to get to know some of those folks.
And I, in our story along that line, as I was leaving, there was a commissioner from a southern county, and they had a newly elected, and he introduced me as the tough one up north that doesn't back down when it comes to our needs. So he goes, don't be afraid of her, but she will not back down, so she'll fight you for every penny.
I attended the health committees, and so the process is that we get together with 11 counties, and we sort out what we feel is important, and then it comes to beyond the district, and then it comes to the state, and so we have like, what, four pages of all the concerns that came before decision-making in the fall? And now in February, we're going to take all of those and present that to legislative entities, and hopefully, and I know they will listen because they have in the past. And some new things have come up, and so we have them categorized according to what each of the districts feel are important, and they will be addressed at our February meeting, and that's why it's important for us to be at the table with that also. Anything else on meetings to note?
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment on this morning a little bit because we heard, heard from people, and we, we heard from some smart people who had numbers. And I would, you know, speak to Mr. Speck having the numbers in his head, and I would say, he has an amazing head for numbers. But I just got to say that what I've learned, my experience with numbers is numbers without context are not only, they're not particularly useful. In the budgeting in my business that I've done over the years, it only makes sense to look at numbers in context of past years and numbers considering where you want to end up. So numbers for one year are not, are not useful. And so, and I'm not diminishing his intelligence because he is a smart guy, and he does know his numbers, but the numbers that he presented today, it's not because I'm not listening, and it's not because I disrespect him. It's, they don't, they're not the numbers that I get to pay attention to. As a county commissioner, I have to pay attention to the numbers in the context of the last five years and looking forward the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years. I don't, I can't just limit my knowledge of the numbers to the budget at hand. I have to look forward, and I have to be informed by the numbers of the past. So although I can appreciate his head for numbers, I, I can't, that's not all I can, that's not all I have. I don't get to just rely on those numbers. So I just wanted to mention that, that our job is not to look at the road immediately in front of the car. We have to look down the road in order to get there. And it's just not helpful to hear those numbers expressed that way. It's not helpful to me. Not that I wouldn't want to have a conversation with them if, you know, both sides are willing to listen. I would hope that we could grow that community of listening and understanding versus attack, mistrust, et cetera. I'm really grow, I've grown so weary of that lack of trust and, and that making assumptions about what we're doing, making bad decisions. It's not true. That's all I can say.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Along the lines of the discussion this morning, the day before Truth and Taxation, I received an email from one of my residents that said 2019 property tax, so I braced myself to open the email, and the email was, Commissioner DuKirk, can I pay more taxes to receive more services? And that is a lot of the conversations that I get is that question, you know, how, how do we increase that? And so the voices in here are very important, but they're not the only voices that I hear as a commissioner. It's not the only people that talk to me, so I do respect the people that come here and talk to us. people who ask me to stay than I have who ask me to step down. So, I will continue to do my job.
Any other comments on that? Moving on then to meeting updates.
Madam Chair, if I could, the motion related to commissioner salaries and per diems, I shot a quick email off to AMC, and Jill Sermeyer responded with a state auditor's policy brief, and generally, only one per diem per day is permitted.
Okay.
I could take time to read this, but it says generally, a county commissioner may only collect one per diem for each calendar day spent performing official duties. More than one per diem for a given day is only permitted if a county commissioner performs commissioner duties and also separately performs duties for another body with independent statutory authority to compensate its members, which means that the county can only pay you once per day. So, I think we can consider, we can clarify, we could clarify it now, we could clarify it on the eighteenth, but I do think we need to address the motion that was passed related to commissioner salaries.
So, can I move to rescind my motion?
You would just make another motion to amend the commissioner salaries to only one per diem per day. Essentially, then, you'd be accepting the salary as it is. You would be adding the $500 a year to the vice chair, which I think was supported, and you have the latitude to do that. But I think we should probably adjust the per diem to be per day.
Makes sense. I would amend my, I'd make a new motion to accept, except the resolution as written, it's not a resolution, one per diem per day, $500 vice chair, and the salary as written.
Support? Any comments, questions? All in favors? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign?
Thank you, Jeff, for looking into that.
Yeah, thanks for the context. Okay.
Context is complicated.
That's why computers are so wonderful.
Usually get a pretty good response, or at least know that we will get a response. Okay, so, we have, anything else?
Otherwise, we will yes. We will yes to Commissioner DuKirk, who will read the employees' times here, and we support everything they have done.
All right, we have Diana Lindquist, five years in land services, Rebecca Isbell, three years in our auditor's office, Lindsay Milkie, fourteen years at law enforcement, Charlie Sawyer, ten years in the highway department, Ben Hallberg, thirteen years at law enforcement, Allison McIntyre, six years in public health and human services, Lisa Sorley, ten years at the highway department, and Julie Kinney, five years in public health and human services. Thank you.
Thank you for your good work. Anything else to discuss? Otherwise, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We are adjourned.